Can you hear that? The mayor talking?
He's sixth. Oh, thank you. We have one item that was carried over from this morning. It'll just take us a moment. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll and then I'm going to read a script in a moment regarding Commissioner Udaley, who's joining us on the phone. So there's some formal language. I'll say that in a minute. But first, if we could just call the roll.
Can you wait just one moment? We're trying to get the...
Sure. For you, Carla, anything.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan. You do not have to run. Very good. Okay. Commissioner Udaley is home with a sick child. Her failure to participate in today's council session would jeopardize the public interest, health, safety, or welfare. Am I reading this correctly?
Yes.
Huh, okay. Therefore, unless there is objection by any member of the council, Commissioner Udaley will participate in today's hearing by teleconference. Is there any objection? There is no objection. Very good. We've completed that script. Please call the roll.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Udaley.
Here.
Fritz.
Wheeler.
Here. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Udaley. I hope you're smiling from afar. Item number 422. Could you call the item, please?
422, authorize a contract with ICF Jones and Stokes, Inc. in the amount of $240,000 to provide for the use of a proprietary habitat model for the city's Salmon Safe certification.
Commissioner Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, in honor of Earth Week, the Bureau of Environmental Services has brought forth the two different items. One, recently, when we sought the support of the council to turn methane gas into clean energy, triple win for the city, our environment, our ratepayers, and we were very proud of that. Today is the second installment of our Earth Day story, and it's about the city's Salmon Safe certification and our role in it. Portland is home to more endangered species than any other U.S. city. And when Caitlin once said that to me, I had her repeat it a few times because I had to let it sink in. We are home to more endangered species than any other U.S. city. This includes 13 different species of salmon. When she said it to me, the first thing I thought, oh, shame on us. And then I realized, no, we're home to endangered species. There's something about our habitat that's welcoming. Last year, Portland was the first city in the world to receive a Salmon Safe certification. This was a multi-year, multi-bureau effort and required a lot of hard work from many teams across the city. The work that BES has done to achieve certification has received national and local acclaim. The Johnson Creek Flood Plane Restoration Projects, the Crystal Springs Restoration, the Mason Flats Wetland Restorations, and Columbia Slough, to name a few. All of these projects help make our city safer for fish and for people. That's why I'm asking the Bureau of Environmental Services to build on our work and reconvene the multi-bureau team that collaborated during the Salmon Safe review process to explore a more formal, citywide program to designate the best of the best rivers and streams as, quote, "urban salmon sanctuaries," end quote, and to bring a full proposal back to council this fall. More immediately, the reason we're here today is to approve an ordinance that will improve the effectiveness of our ongoing restoration efforts across all the watersheds and implement some of the recommendations that came out of the extensive Salmon Safe review process. Here to join us today is Caitlin Lovell, Science Division Manager for BES and her team, which she'll introduce, to walk us through this presentation. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon. Thank you for squeezing us in.
Good afternoon.
I've brought with me today Melissa Brown, my senior fish biologist, who's in charge of coordinating the Bureau's implementation of the Salmon Safe conditions, and Rhonda Fast, who is here to highlight one of the Bureau's most visible salmon projects. A little background, on June 5th, 2013, Mayor Hale's pledge that Portland would become the first certified Salmon Safe city in the world. Salmon Safe is an independent, nonprofit accreditation organization headquartered here in Portland that has become a leading eco-label dedicated to the protection and improvement of native Pacific Northwest salmon habitat and watershed health. Portland Parks has been certified Salmon Safe since 2004. The mayor's pledge called on BES, Water Bureau, PBOT, OMF, and FIRE to also become Salmon Safe certified. Over the next two years, the team from Salmon Safe and their independent scientists reviewed all of the Bureau's operations against their salmon-focused criteria. Salmon Safe officially presented their conditional certification to council on October 26th, 2016. The certification included many recommendations in the form of conditions in order for us to maintain the certification over the next five years. There are actually four cross-bureau certifications that apply to all of the bureaus, and each bureau has their own set of conditions. For BES specifically, we have eight conditions. We're here, we're well on our way to implementing and responding to all of them. But today, we're here specifically to talk about BES Condition 5. The results of this review were really not surprising at all. BES is doing some great things for salmon, but there are some areas for improvement. Condition 5 directs BES to commission an independent evaluation of recently completed restoration projects by a team of outside experts in restoration ecology and related fields, and it goes on to further describe how we should actually do that. Condition 5 is the only condition that we need outside assistance to satisfy, and at this time, all other conditions are being addressed with internal staff and existing budgets. In selecting this methodology, we wanted something that was peer-reviewed, widely accepted, and durable. But we also didn't want it to just work for Salmon Safe. We needed to look at a number of different options that serve multiple bureau needs. So the objectives included meeting multiple bureau objectives and specifically leveraging the results with our stormwater systems planning and our watershed systems capital investments. We also looked for a program that was cost-effective and relatively within existing bureau budgets. We landed on ecosystem diagnosis and treatment. It's a proprietary model owned by ICF Jones and Stokes International. We've used EDT in the past, as has the Water Bureau. They're currently using it for their Bull Run Habitat Conservation Plan. Because when we issued a prior RFP on this, it resulted in one response. Procurement directed us to issue this as a direct contract. So that's all sort of jargon and contract speak, and I wanted to really explain how this will make a difference on the ground. In the Salmon Safe report, they commended BES for impressive progress in restoring floodplains and salmon habitat along Johnson Creek, Crystal Springs, and other city waterways with many major projects completed in recent years. What we can do is we can look at all of those projects individually. What EDT will allow us to do is to provide the tools to really quantify the cumulative effect of all of those projects on the landscape itself and on the salmon. And what I'm going to turn over to Rhonda here in a second to show you is just how impressive all of this work has been. I think Crystal Springs really highlights the power of the work that we've been doing and the value that EDT will bring to our projects as we move forward.
Okay. Like Caitlin said, one of the areas we'll be particularly interested in the results of the EDT analysis will be in Crystal Springs Creek, where since 2010, BES and numerous partners, too many to name here, made targeted investments in restoring nearly half of the entire length of Crystal Springs since 2010. But first, to orient you, Crystal Springs Creek is attributable to Johnson Creek in southeast Portland's Selwood neighborhood, flowing from springs in Reed, both Reed College and East Morland Golf Course. Crystal Springs has, there's no fish passage barriers between it and the Pacific Ocean. Salmon seek refuge here when the Willamette is too warm or during higher flows. But Crystal Springs faced three primary problems, which I'll talk about a little bit today and how we tackled those problems. Beginning in 2010, we began an effort with numerous partners to replace, or in one case, remove, all nine undersized culverts that impeded fish passage, including one owned by Union Pacific Railroad. Eight of which, eight culverts were publicly owned, but this one here that we celebrated in 2013 was the only one not in public control. It was the one that could have gotten away, but it didn't. And then at the Brennan property, this site looks very different today than it once did. It used to have a home, a triplex, actually, and the property owners sold the property to us. For the purposes of doing restoration, we removed a culvert on this site entirely and restored it to its current function today. The other challenge that Crystal Springs faced is water quality, especially in regard to temperature and stormwater-related pollution. Here in the upper part, West Morland Park, the old, large, shallow, open body of water here, the former duck pond, contributed nearly six degrees Fahrenheit, especially in summer months, and elevated nutrient levels contributed to stream health and public health concerns here. And in some areas, the stormwater flowed directly into the creek, picking up pollutants with it. So anywhere we could, we worked to give the stream more room. And we, in those situations, we installed riparian buffers, green streets, and pervious pavement to manage stormwater more effectively. And lastly, Crystal Springs suffered from the lack of habitat. And in many locations, concrete curbing along the stream prevented the connection between the stream and its surrounding flood plain. And so improvements were made, targeted improvements were made over eight years in Crystal Springs along nearly half the length of the stream. And this is, this is now, and salmon responded right away during the salmon celebration at West Morland Park here during 2014 salmon celebration. Salmon were present in the park as we celebrated. So it's a testament to if you build it, they will come. And we're excited to see the results of evaluating the work and seeing what changes we would need to possibly make in designs for the future projects.
The contract, the total contract is $240,000. It's phased over three fiscal years, and it's divided up into seven discrete tasks, which will get started immediately. At this point, we're confident that EDT will give us many good reasons to celebrate, and we're really excited about Commissioner Fish's charge to BES to reconvene the Salmon Safe team to explore this idea of establishing an urban salmon sanctuary in the city. We look forward to returning in the fall with a full proposal for your consideration. At this point, we welcome your questions.
I'll just say this. I think this is fantastic.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you, Commissioner Fish, for taking up the mantle of this. I want to thank my predecessor, Mayor Hale's, who saw the value in this vision, and I think it's terrific.
Mayor, one, couple of observations. One is that some of the best work we've done here, we did in partnership with Portland Parks and Rec. And when they, we did the dedication at Crystal Springs, we were there with the Army Corps of Engineers, with BES, with Parks, and others. And so it was, it was an example of where partnership taken to a new level can, can result in something great. The second thing is, I am spoiled in BES because of the quality of the people who work at the Bureau. And Dan knows this. We just have tremendous people. These are some of the best people who work at the Bureau. Caitlin has really pushed some of our work to the next level, which is why Mike How invites her and not me when they do tours of these places, which is a smart move. The other thing I just want to point out is, sometimes people ask, you know, why the focus on salmon and how does that relate to our work? And I think, I think she said it best. When salmon are healthy, it's a pretty good indicator of the health of people. And if, if we become a city that really puts the salmon front and center, and I know Spencer Beebe will be pleased to hear this, but if we, if we fly that flag throughout our platforms, what we're really doing is building a city and restoring nature in the city so that it is a healthier place for people. And along the way, when we do this work, we also think it's a good value for our ratepayers because we are, we are a heavily regulated Bureau that has lots of permits and lots of concerns. And, you know, now that salmon have come back to these places and can be seen spawning and, and healthy, it's remarkable. If, if I could be king for a day, though, I'd expand the bike infrastructure on the Orange Line so that once you hit McAdam, it doesn't become sort of a, you know, catch as catch can to the neighborhood. And it would make this, Crystal Springs, more accessible to the rest of the city. And I hope at some point, they do build out the bike infrastructure along, along the Orange Line because that's the missing piece to bring people.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Please continue.
I just want to say, I'm incredibly proud of their work, and it has very little to do with my leadership and a lot to do with the leadership of the women who are joining us today.
I did have a question. So obviously, the spring flows through all kinds of properties, public and private. What sort of reaction are you getting from private sector property owners to some of the improvements you're making along the banks immediately adjacent to private property? And what kind of process do you go through to get their support?
We work with private property owners up and down the stream. We've had to secure easements for projects, and so overall, the measure of our success is whether or not they grant us permission to do the work on their property is one measure. And they've granted that permission to us willingly. We have relationships with most all of the property owners along Crystal Springs Creek. Much of the creek is publicly owned, but there are sections of it that are privately owned where it goes through people's backyards and front yards. And, and we work with them. We connect them to resources if we can't provide those resources, with the Watershed Council, with the Crystal Springs Partnership. And part of what we do is try to be a connector. And so if we can't provide resources directly, then we connect them to people who can. And we always try to form positive relationships with folks along, because they have a resource in their backyard that we hope they take care of for the good of all.
What is the source of Crystal Springs? Obviously, it's a spring. Where is the source located?
There's actually a number of different springs, Mayor. They start up at Reed College, who is actually one of the best, most sustainably oriented landowners, riparian landowners on the creek. And then the other is up at the Roda Denren Garden, which is owned by Portland Parks. And so those two, those two wings of the creek, if you will, come together in the golf course, the East Morland Golf Course.
So as a salmon habitat, I assume, based on your presentation and the minimal amount that I know about springs, it's actually fairly cold water, would be my guess, and consistently so. Is, is that one of the attractive features from the perspective of salmon habitat?
That's the primary attractant at this point. And the springs come out of the ground at about 12, 12 degrees Celsius. We'd like to keep them under, by the time it gets to Johnson Creek, we want to make sure that it's no higher than 18 degrees Celsius, so no more than six degrees through all of that. We're well on our way. There's still some heat sources that we need to take, take care of through the system. But doing these kinds of projects, taking out the ponds, riparian plantings, is really going a long way. We've reduced the stream temperature by over three degrees Celsius just through these projects alone. By comparison, on some of the major creeks, major streams where utilities, for example, hydropower dams have to also worry about temperature, they, PGE estimates that they spend about $1 million per degree just to reduce temperature. And we're able to do it and achieve all these other multiple benefits as well. It's also one of the primary activities that we've called out in the climate change work. So this is really helping us as building our climate resilience as a city.
And final word, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're in the process of completing our, our next strategic plan and, and working with the community. You're going to hear three consistent themes going forward. One is this idea of urban salmon sanctuaries, and you'll get a major presentation in the fall, but it is an organizing principle which we think is going to change the way we, we do our work. Number two, you're going to hear about how we take waste and turn it into clean energy and produce value for ratepayers. And, and number three, why am I blanking on number three? Oh, I am blanking on number three. Those two are pretty good. Oh, I know.
Every day.
Number three is that Director Jordan thinks that with, with your support, Mayor, and the council's support over the next 10 years, we can get to a point where the Bureau becomes the first fully sustainable infrastructure bureau of the city, which means we've caught up, our, all of our infrastructure is in good or better condition, and we're paying as we go, which, which...
Music to my ears.
Of course, is, is largely attributable to a dedicated revenue source, which PBOT does not have, but, but would, I think, set a standard for how we maintain our infrastructure.
That's great. Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you. I found it interesting that Parks got its certification over 10 years ago, and yet some of these projects are in Parks. And then you mentioned that Crystal Springs still has some hotspots to go. So am I correct in deducing that you get to the salmon size safe level, but then there's still things that you could do to make it even better?
Absolutely. Salmon Safe just looked at our day-to-day operations as different bureaus. So for Parks, it's really how they plan their parks, their, how they take care of the riparian area, what kind of chemicals, irrigation, those kinds of operational things. Same with BES. It's how we manage stormwater on our sites, dealing with erosion, how we process restoration projects through our internal capitalization policies and prioritizations. And so that gets us to a certain level, but there's always more that we can do, and there are always opportunities that when we bring together the right partners, will present themselves, that we ourselves couldn't do just through our own day-to-day operations.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Fritz did you...
I was just going to say, I suspect there are not many cities in the nation who have golf courses which are Salmon Safe.
No. I believe New York was looking after that, and we've, since the city has become Salmon Safe certified, we've gotten a number of surprising calls, actually, from around the country, from small cities in Washington, Ellensburg, Washington, to cities in California investigating how we were able to do it. So I think there's a lot of interest.
And one of, one of the big concerns I get from constituents on Parks issues is the use of selected things like Roundup occasionally. And we do have an integrated pest management system that absolutely is the least possible toxic level to maintain, and so that's still in Salmon Safe purview. So, and then we're doing a pilot on the banning of neonicotinoids, so looking at, are the roses still able to fight off rose midge? And so it's, I think, a helpful reminder that you can get to a certain level and you still keep trying, you still keep looking at how could we make things even better. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Udaley... Commissioner Udaly, before we go to public testimony, did you have any comments?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there any public testimony on this item?
Starr had signed up earlier, but I believe she left.
Let's go to a second reading. Okay, very good. Any further conversation? If none, we will, this is a non-emergency first reading, it moves to second reading. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
So Mayor, there is some urgency in concluding this contract, and it does technically meet the definition of slapping an emergency clause on with my, with my colleague's dispensation.
I'd be happy to second that. So state for the record, what is the reason for adding the emergency?
Caitlin.
The emergency is twofold. One is to be able to start this work during this fiscal year, to be able to get a jumpstart. And the other is to be able to use some of these initial results to inform this urban salmon sanctuary proposal that we want to bring back in the fall.
So in other words, saving the planet doesn't wait.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, very good. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Please call the roll on the amendment.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
You Daly?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Now to the main motion, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fish?
I'm very proud to support this. I am extremely grateful for the high quality of the work of, of the leadership of my Bureau, and, and I think Caitlin consistently brings distinction to our Bureau as to, as to all of her colleagues. And I thank you for your presentation, your good work, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Saltzman?
Well, thank you for your great work. Thanks, Commissioner Fish, for leading this effort, and it's very exciting where you're, where you're taking our city. So thank you, on behalf of me and all the salmon. Aye.
You Daly?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, I can quite see, Commissioner, why you wanted to wait until we could do the PowerPoint because the photographs really do say a lot about it. And I'm also glad that we added the emergency so that we can tell you right now that we very much appreciate the work that you're doing, and please keep doing even more. Aye.
Wheeler?
Good ordinance. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you to the staff for your hard work on this. I am an aye, the ordinance is adopted, is amended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 424, adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 spring supplemental budget and make other budget-related changes.
Good afternoon. And while you're getting situated, I just want to call to the attention of my colleagues, you have the proposed amendment sheet in front of you that has everything from the Tuesday memo that you received based on conversations we had last week. Commissioner Fritz has an amendment she would also like to add, so before we get started, Commissioner, if you wanted to add what we'll call Fritz Amendment Number Two?
Number two is a correction in the bump for PK 17 on page 238 of the packet. The $300,000 in previous year funding for East Portland master plans was incorrectly titled with three specific park plans. What we actually did was we were able to squeeze four park plans out of the three by combining two of them. So council is getting more, more value for the money that we expended. And since there has been somewhat more work, we would like, we are asking to carry the remaining $40,000 over, for continuing to, to plan the East, the Division and 150th Avenue site, as well as Wilkes and Miller and Midland.
I'll second the amendment.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Fritz, a second from Commissioner Fish. So we now have, just to make sure we're all clear, we have the mayor amendments, there are one, two, three, four amendments, and I'll have CBO go through each of those in turn to briefly explain the purpose of those amendments. Commissioner Udaly has offered up one amendment regarding the Portland United Against Hate. Commissioner Fritz had previously put in her Portland Parks and Recreation Fund 402 amendment. She's now put in her second amendment. So I believe that is the total of the amendments so far. Is that correct? Unless, and I, I don't think anybody has any more to put in today, but have I missed anything?
I might like to discuss it later. I just wanted to clarify this technical language on the amendment. Do you need me to read that into the record as my summary?
Why don't you do that, please, just for the record?
Okay, this is it. Reduce Bureau program expenses in Portland Parks and Recreation General Fund by $40,000 for master planning for any Portland Park, that's for this year, and set aside funds for program carryover and allocation in the financial year 2017 to 18 budget. Funding for several East Portland Parks master plans was originally allocated in the fall financial year 2014 to 15 supplemental budget, and due to the efficient use of resources, the Bureau is able to complete planning for an additional park within the originally allocated resources, and this updates Exhibits 1 through 5 as needed to reflect this change.
Very good. And Director Scott, I'll turn this over to you, but at some point during your presentation, if you could also please reference the four amendments that I've put forward on behalf of CBO. Thank you.
I will do so. Thank you, good afternoon, Andrew Scott, City Budget Director, and with me is Jessica Kennard, the City Supplemental Budget Coordinator. So we had a work session on the spring budget supplemental last Thursday, April 20th, where we went through some of the details in this bump, so I won't rehash a lot of those, but I will, just for folks today, recap at a high level what's before you today in the spring budget supplemental. The spring budget supplemental is when bureaus do carryovers, when they do some true-ups in their budget, when we allocate compensation set aside to ensure bureaus have sufficient resources to get through the end of the year. Currently, in the general fund, there is discretionary contingency balance of about $4.7 million. That includes $3.1 million of compensation set aside and $1.1 million of unrestricted contingency. The supplemental budget before you today, prior to the amendments, includes the following changes to contingency, and these are also listed on the General Fund Reconciliation Report in, in your, in your materials. It includes a $2.2 million draw on compensation set aside for the Office of Equity and Human Rights, the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, Fire, the Fire, Portland Fire Bureau, Police Bureau, and the Mayor's Office. In addition, it includes a $154,452 net draw on unrestricted contingency. And this is for a few different requests. This includes funding related to the Portland Building Emergency Shelter, it's about $29,000, $12,000 in funding for the Auditor's Office to complete the political consultant online application, and $50,000 that was pre-allocated by council for the Metropolitan Public Defender's Office in a previous council action. This adjustment to contingency also includes retention of $200,000 that was budgeted to be returned to the general fund from hydro fund, but it will be kept in the hydro fund. And then that's mostly offset by a return from the Bureau of Emergency Communications for prior year underspending. And then finally, the supplemental budget includes $5.2 million deposited into contingency for program carryovers that will be rebudgeted in 2017-18 again. All of these are pre-amendment totals in terms of what was filed. With those things, before the amendments, contingency balance after these items, there would still be unrestricted contingency of just over $900,000. There would be compensation set aside of about $950,000, and as I mentioned, that policy set aside for next year's program carryovers of $5.2 million. Outside of the general fund, or just, you know, in general throughout Bureau's position changes, there are, there's one new limited-term position and 29 regular positions being added in this supplemental budget. 24 of those are in the Bureau of Development Services to deal with the workload up there and, and get moving as quickly as they can to process permits and other things. It does convert nine limited-term positions to regular, and it eliminates five positions in the Parks Bureau. And, you know, overall, I won't go through a lot of the general, the non-general fund bureaus. There's a lot of, of just, just technical moves within this, within this budget supplemental. But it is worth noting that permit planning and system development charge revenues continue to be strong in several bureaus, which again is, is allowing some of those new positions to be funded. And then two other just technical issues of note that are in here, there are two technical additions in this supplemental budget. The authorization of the Housing Capital Fund is being undertaken by council today. That fund will be used to budget affordable housing capital project spending largely related to the recently passed general obligation bond. And then finally, a formal authorization of vehicle acquisition in accordance with the 2001 policy. I think there were three vehicles purchased on behalf of Trimitte, is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, and that, that just didn't meet that 2001 policy, and so we're just correcting that as a technical issue today. So moving on to the amendments that are in front of you, I'll talk briefly about the amendments from the Mayor's Office. There are four of them. Two of these amendments relate to budgeted debt service funds in the current year that are not needed in the current year. And what these amendments do is they request the funds to be carried over and budgeted to fund one-time priorities in next year's budget, in the fiscal year 2017-18 budget. One of those is debt service related to fuel stations. You may recall, council authorized those new fuel stations a couple of years ago. They just haven't issued the debt service yet, so those projects are moving forward on schedule as far as I know, but they didn't need the funding this year. And so it can be used for next year's priorities. And then the second was related to the Portland Building and some of the debt service related to that, and in terms of the timing when that's going to be issued. So that, the full amount was not needed, so it can be returned and rebudgeted. And then we are capturing, as I mentioned, of those remaining totals, there would be about $950,000 of compensation set aside after the actions taken. The third amendment is, would transfer $587,000 of that compensation set aside funding to rebudget in 2017-18. And then the fourth amendment from the mayor reduces program expenses in the Housing Bureau for the East Portland Rental Rehabilitation Program and carries them over for the same program for next year. This wasn't included in the, in the request from PHB, but it is a program carryover. They, they didn't move forward in terms of getting that money out the door this year, so carrying that funding over to, to do the rental rehabilitation program in next year's budget.
The other amendments?
Yes, I can talk through the others as well. In terms of Commissioner Udaly has an amendment, this would increase program expenses and special appropriations by $40,000 to fund program design and startup for the Portland United Against Hate. Funding would draw on general fund, that $40,000 would come out of general fund unrestricted contingency. This is a budget request that's in next year's budget as well, but the Office of Neighborhood Involvement wanted to get moving as quickly as possible and, and would like $40,000 to get started on that in the current fiscal year. And then Commissioner Fritz, happy to go through your amendment as well that's on the list?
Just explain--
Sure. Yeah, this, what this amendment does is it increases expenses within Parks and Recreation by $300,000, which is also coming out of that unrestricted contingency, to address immediate facilities and equipment needs related to health, safety, and environmental issues. And this is to deal with some of the recently discovered environmental issues in, in some of Parks facilities. I'm happy to take any questions on the bump.
And Commissioner Fritz, did you want to explain Fritz Number Two?
Oh, I thought I did.
Well, how about this? Andrew, would you like to describe Fritz Two, as you understand it?
Yes, and I, I think actually Commissioner Fritz did, in terms of reading the language, it would, currently, Parks is requesting 300, am I getting the number right?
It's the 40,000.
Yeah.
We already got 300, we haven't quite spent it all, and we want to carry the remaining--
So this is just a carryover?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. $210,000 was the request, it currently is $170,000, and so this would amend it to increase that by $40,000 to the $210,000 request for the East Portland Parks planning.
Thank you.
Andrew, is it fair to say, since you're the independent budget office, that none of these requests raise any flags? For you, these are simply policy questions that the council gets to decide?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask some questions about the only carryover for the, Commissioner Dr. Saltzman's not here, I'll wait until he comes back because I'd like him to be part of this discussion.
He may not be back for long.
Okay.
His chief, his chief pulled him.
Okay.
Well, we've got nothing to time because the next item's a time-certain. Three o'clock.
Maybe--
So is this public testimony?
Why don't we take public testimony and come back to questions?
Good idea. How many people do we have signed up for public testimony?
We have one person.
Hi, Carla, under the circumstance, we're going to have to cut this to one minute.
Alan Warman.
Come on up, Mr. Warman. Thank you.
Mr. Warman is, as you know, ladies and gentlemen, is the co-chair of the Portland Utility Board, and I'm not sure how he retains his day job with all the time he volunteers providing oversight to our public utilities, and we're very grateful for your service, sir.
Because right now, he's traveling on business and you just outed him. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. My name's Alan Warman, as you just introduced me. I'm the co-chair. In 2015, this body, the Portland Utility Board, was created primarily because BEES and the Water Bureau's long-term planning process, including the 25-year system plan, the five-year capital improvement plan, budgets, annual budgets, rate-setting processes, debt requirements, required an engaged, well-informed and year-round oversight body. The Pub was charged with advising this council on the Bureau's budgets, and I'm here today in that capacity. The Pub Budget Subcommittee met two weeks ago to consider the spring bump. There are submissions from both bureaus and CBO's recommendations. Pub board members were generally supportive of the request and had conversations specifically about two components. First, BEES is requesting moving forward the authorization and funding of two new FTEs that were requested in the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget process. These specific FTEs are the pollution prevention and the spill protection FTEs. Pub's supportive of these two positions, and we believe moving the request to the bump allows the Bureau to get a jump, a jumpstart on the HR process here at the city. Both positions will need staff support for program areas in the bureaus that are experiencing increased customer involvement and demands for services, so we support that. In general, the Pub has concerns about the Bureau adding full-time staff through the bump process because the Pub feels these discussions are best had during the annual comprehensive budget considerations with public vetting. However, these two positions did go through the process, and Pub supports the authorization and funding of them. The second, the Water Bureau request includes a decrease in transfers to the general fund relating to hydropower. There is a lot of uncertainty as the Bureau works through the process of setting up new sales and a new operating and maintenance agreement this summer. Pub members encouraged the Water Bureau to proactively think about risks, setting a policy for a new reserve fund, and the public, and the Pub will actively monitor this process through the summer. That's the end, thank you.
Mr. Warman, just to be clear--
Yes.
--a reserve fund in connection with the hydropower business--
That's correct.
That's correct. And I think that's a splendid idea, and the next chapter of our hydropower business is going to require a lot of consultation with the Pub for us to figure it out, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Warman, I, I just want to again extend my thanks to you and to your colleagues for their volunteer service and their diligent evaluation, both of the bump as well as the work that we've been doing together on the full 17-18 budget requests. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Saltzman's going to be a few more minutes, I said.
Thank you for checking.
Should we, should we vote on the amendments that are not--
Why don't we, yeah, why don't we do that and hold off on the Udaly amendment? So at this--
I'm fine with the Udaly amendment.
What's that, which one, I'm sorry, is--
Well, the Udaly amendment is for the Portland United Against Hate, and I certainly support that.
Oh, which is the one you had questions about?
Well, it's in the, it's in the City Budget Office.
Okay, very good.
Let's do the ones that are, that we agree to.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we start with the amendments? Why don't--
Wheeler, one, two, three, four?
One, two, three, and four, we'll do them in order. Can I get a, let's see, the amendments are already on the table, so can you please call the roll on Wheeler one?
I'm sorry, which one?
Wheeler one, so it'd be basically the first bullet point under the mayor's.
I didn't--
And they're already read into the record through--
Yeah, I had, I don't have anyone moving or seconding those. I have them on the Fritz amendment moving and seconding, but the memo I don't have.
So we still, we still have to move them all even if they're on the memo?
I think you can--
Okay, so I will quickly, I will quickly move Wheeler one, two, three, and four per the memo. Do I need to read them all into the record?
They're already--
They're already part of the record, aren't they? Perfect, good. And then we already have, is Commissioner Udaly's in the record yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was--
I think they've all been read into the record.
And I'll second--
Okay, good. So we, we now have motions and seconds for Wheeler one, two, three, and four. Please call the roll on Wheeler one.
Fish?
I just want to note for the record the predicament that the mayor's amendments I just want to note for the record the predicament that the mayor's amendments has put his colleagues. The mayor has proposed an amendment tomorrow, he takes all the bureaus, and Monday he issues his proposed budget. So I've had to think long and hard about whether I vote no on this amendment, Mayor, but since it's so utterly straightforward, I will support it.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Appreciate the attention to detail, aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the amendment is adopted. Wheeler two, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the amendment's adopted. Wheeler three, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the amendment is adopted. Wheeler number four, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the amendment is adopted. Udaley Amendment Number One, please call the roll.
Fish?
Colleagues, I just want to say that I think this concept of Portland United Against Hate that was presented to us during the budget is very promising, and I'm pleased that we are voting to get a head start on implementing this worthy program. Aye.
Udaley?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish, for your support, and I'm also anxious to get started because I'm sure all of you have heard, we've had another incident over the weekend, and we need to get this rolling. Aye.
Fritz? I'm very proud to have been in charge of Officer Neighborhood Involvements when this movement got going and to have been a partner in its formation, so obviously I support this and will support the other request in the budget. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the amendment is adopted. Fritz Number One, please call the roll.
I think I need a second.
I'm sorry, never got a second?
Fritz one?
Yeah.
Aye, a second.
So Commissioner Fish seconds and votes, and?
Andrew, is there any reason why we should turn this down?
No, not?
The witness is shaking his head.
This is on the, no.
No, this is money to do some emergency work in public facilities where children are at risk of exposure to toxic things like asbestos.
Very good, so it has now been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on Fritz Number One.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, Fritz Number One is adopted, and Fritz Number Two, has that been seconded?
I don't have that.
Let's get a second for Fritz Number Two. Commissioner Fish seconds that, so it's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on Fritz Number Two.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, Fritz Number Two is adopted. So back to the main motion, it sounds like the only thing holding us up is a question that Commissioner Fritz has.
And it's actually to address a concern that Commissioner Saltzman raised during last year's budget process, where we had a very narrow three-to-two vote that Commissioner Fish and Mayor Hales joined me in, and to allocate 350,000 to a project that had come out of the Office of Neighborhood Involvement Budget Committee to do outreach on housing and homeless services. And Commissioner Saltzman voted against it, saying that he was not confident that the money would go out to the community. I promised at the time that only a .25 FTE in the Office of Neighborhood Involvement to administer the grants, that was the only staff time within the city that it would happen. The council directed the Office of Neighborhood Involvement to return with a plan for council approval last October after engaging the Housing Bureau and the Joint Office in the plan, and council specifically approved that plan in October. The reasoning for the way it was planned and approved is allowing community groups to engage their own members is a very efficient and effective method of reaching members of the community, often in their own language. And so since the request is now changed into two internal positions, both, some of which seem primarily related to the work of the Joint Office of Homeless Services, I'm wondering what council, and as I say, I would have hoped that Commissioner Saltzman would have been part of this, what council is thinking on that? Particularly, Mayor, you're looking at the office, creating an office of landlord and tenant services, and also you're obviously a representative to the Joint Office. How do these two proposed positions relate to all of that work?
I will defer to Commissioner Udaley.
One moment, please. So obviously I wasn't there when all these decisions had been made, and I wasn't necessarily cognizant of the conversations that led up to this allocation. I, coming in to Oney, and in light of the auditor's report, the response to local media coverage on this 350, how this $350,000 would be used, and, sorry, I'm trying to pull up some notes, I've got three different documents right now, three different devices right now, slightly awkward not to be there, thank you for bringing me in. So the money was originally allocated for housing emergency community engagement project, and as I said, in light of the audit, in light of public response that my office received from media attention, and after speaking to Mark Jolyn, county officials, neighborhood coalition directors, and others, after taking over Oney, you know, the recurring refrain I heard was, please don't duplicate efforts, please don't reinvent the wheel, and we just felt that this would be a better use of the funds. I'm going to defer to my colleagues, I guess, to decide if that's acceptable, given the terms that were set at the outset when I was not there. We are turning $120,000 back to the general fund. We are trying to use these dollars to their, you know, absolute best potential, and I'm not convinced that doling out grants to a variety of community groups to engage members in discussion about our homelessness issues is going to be effective, or, you know, move not just the conversation forward, but actual progress on the issue. So I can go into more detail about the positions that would be created. There's certainly, these positions would interact with the Joint Office, but they're not primarily there to serve the Joint Office. They're there to serve as a liaison between the city, the Joint Office, and the community, and to actually facilitate those conversations that we do want to see happen while providing some consistency and best practices across all of the conversations.
I could also, if I can just chime in, Commissioner Udaley, to buttress your argument. One potential, and I will obviously not dictate how these positions are deployed, that's not my decision, but one potential strategy that I could see based on the description is, given the work we're currently doing with neighborhoods that are not necessarily directly connected in with the overall plan on the Joint Office, and we can have a discussion about the appropriate role of the Joint Office vis-à-vis the interests of the city of Portland, we have lots and lots of interactions with neighborhood associations, with community organizations, with people in the community around not only solutions to homelessness, but also some of the manifestations of homelessness, working with us to address abandoned campsites, working with us to address some of the issues around public health, public safety, environmental issues, and I can just speak for my office, we get tons and tons of calls related to those issues, and I can see where perhaps these two liaison positions would be useful in working with the neighborhood associations and others to help address not only the communication, but some of the real solutions on this front.
Agreed, thank you.
And I'm assuming that it's been discussed with Mark Jolyn?
I have not had, it sounds like Commissioner Udaley has, correct.
Commissioner Saltzman, I'm glad you were able to get back. I'm just going over, because you were the person who was most concerned last year about the allocation, the 350,000 that was going to outreach, and we agreed at council it was only going to be .25 of an FTE within the city, and the rest of it would go out to the community. That's now been changed in this bump process to two positions within the city, and I just wanted to get your feedback on, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that sounds good. I listened a little bit to the discussion as I was out of the room, I was meeting with the city attorney, I apologize, but it sounds good to me.
Okay, that answers my questions, thank you.
Okay, very good, so Commissioner?
Why is there like this big photograph of Commissioner Udaley that looks almost like it's the photograph she uses when she's being interviewed for being a leading lady in a movie, and all of us are like little stick figures by comparison? I object! I object to this stand-in during a council meeting.
Sorry, not sorry.
Yeah, it does, it definitely has a Brady Bunch quality to it.
And by the way, I have a standing objection because the book that she just published about your local government has a picture of me, but it's actually Chris Warner, so there's two strikes.
I have to clarify, I did not publish that, but we do intend to release a series of similar booklets, but some friends and acquaintances beat us to the punch on that one.
Very good, so Commissioner Saltzman, we have moved all of the amendments, they have all been seconded, they have all been approved into the record, so now this leaves us to the question of the main motion. If there is no further discussion or questions of the budget office, I'll go ahead and call the roll on the main motion. Very good.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. This is the chance, time in the debate where we get to thank the staff for their excellent work. You know, a lot of the work we do at City Hall is mysterious to people, and, you know, when I go home and tell my family that I'm working on the fall bump or the spring bump, they look at me like there's maybe an intervention is necessary. And we use these mystical terms that no one understands, "spring bump." What we're really doing is four times a year chewing up our budget and making some technical adjustments, but we do it in this context. There's a lot more actually at stake here than the public sees, and a lot of this is done by staff and then done at the Bureau level, and then what you see when we come to council is those areas where there is a need for further discussion at the council level. So a lot of hard work brings us to this day, but one of the reasons that this city keeps getting awards for the way they do budgeting is the superb quality of the staff, of support we get in doing our budgeting, and the two people before us here today are going to take a bow on behalf of their team for the work they do. And it is not as easy as it looks, but you make it easy the way you guide us through these processes and most often bring us to a point like this where there's broad consensus. So thank you for your fine work, and I'm very pleased to support the bump. Aye.
Saltzman?
Thank you for your work. Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, Mayor, I particularly appreciate you moving this to the afternoon so we could have a robust discussion. We're sometimes accused of rubber-stamping things or sweeping things under the carpet, and I think this process is absolutely, we don't. Also that we, 90% of what the office, the Budget Office recommends, we are happy to accept their resignation, and not resignations.
That's a strange term.
Not yet, sorry.
At least she's projecting.
Not till after next week, Andrew, so we have to accept their recommendations. The amendments that were put forward by my colleagues all show great thoughtfulness, and particularly the two late-breaking ones, I appreciate the Budget Office supporting not only Portland United Against Hate, but also the emergency health, safety, and environment requests coming in from Parks, so thank you for all your work. Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I'll add my thanks. I really enjoyed the work session we had last week, and I appreciate the conversations we've had, and your patience in going through this document line by line, and I've also appreciated working with this team on the proposed budget, which we will be releasing soon. Lot of work went into this, I want to thank my colleagues, I think these are all really thoughtful amendments, and so I'm appreciative of the work you and your teams have put into this, and I'm also just going to say I'm really happy that the bump is a bump in the right direction, but I'm mindful of the fact that it is not always thus. So thank you for your good advice as far as what we should be looking at in this particular budget cycle with regard to the bump, and what we should be moving over to as carry-forwards into the next fiscal year. So with that, I vote aye, and the spring supplemental budget is adopted, is amended. Thank you. And we are right on time for the next item, which is a time certain.
Item 425, accept the Design Overlay Zone Assessment Final Report dated April 2017.
I will turn this over to Commissioner Udaley in a moment to see if she wants to make some introductory remarks, but this, of course, is the Design Overlay Zone Assessment Report. Nobody at City Hall actually calls it that, we all call it the DOZA. This is being cosponsored today by Commissioner Udaley and myself. The work you're going to hear about today complements other work that is taking place that we're doing to streamline the city's development review process, and in particular, we've been looking at ways that we could accelerate the developer, development of housing. And for those of you who are here this morning, we had a very good discussion about the entire spectrum of affordability in housing, and this is actually a really good conversation to have on the heels of the conversation we had this morning. So what Commissioner Udaley and I are asking is for all of us to hear the staff's presentation and the public testimony, and then hopefully at the end of that, accept the report, which will be the basis for implementing changes going forward. And with that, Commissioner Udaley, I don't know if you have any introductory comments you'd like to make?
I do.
Very good.
Thank you. So council has been spending a lot of time this month on design review issues. We've heard an appeal of a Type III design review earlier this month. Last week, we saw the value of design review through several examples shared by the Design Commission in their annual report, and now we're about to hear an assessment of the design review process and outcome. I'm looking forward to hearing from the project team today and working with BDS on implementing some of the changes that have been recommended. I'm also looking forward to working with BDS on improving kind of public involvement and understanding of this process. In general, I do support design review over set standards because the process allows for creative adaptation instead of trying to fit, instead of this one-size-fits-all approach, and many of the developers we've heard from seem to prefer the design review process as well because they often choose review pathways over standard pathways when they have a choice. So I am going to take a leap of faith, given that I cannot see who's in the room, and I'd like to welcome Directors Susan Anderson and Rebecca Esaw to present this report.
Very good, and they are sitting right here and ready to go.
Fantastic, welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner Udaley, and Mayor, and the rest of council. Good afternoon, I'm Susan Anderson, I'm the Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and with me is Rebecca Esaw, BDS interim director. We're really pleased to bring you this assessment of the design review system. It's been a great collaboration between the two bureaus, and we're excited to begin to make improvements to the design review process. As you know, the city is growing rapidly. We will have 50,000 to 60,000 more people calling the central city home and living here in the central city in the next 20 years, and about another 150,000 people moving to the rest of our community. So design overlay zones help us to protect and to provide for a vibrant downtown, for great neighborhoods, and to promote better design, but for design overlays to work, they need to deliver on all those benefits and at the same time not have unnecessary burdens on the stakeholders in the neighborhood and on the developers. So in the next 15 to 20 minutes, we're going to share some really excellent ideas and some options for how to improve the design review system, some of the short-term actions we've already, BDS and others have already jumped on, and others will take a little bit longer to implement. We look forward to working hand-in-hand, BDS and BPS, to ensure that our design goals are met and that the process really delivers. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Susan and her staff for managing this project, they've been doing a great job with this important work. They've been doing a great job with this important work. And I'd like to thank my staff as well for all the time and energy they've put into it, as well as the commissioners. Our bureaus have a special relationship in that BPS develops policy and amends the zoning code, and then BDS administers that code along with the commissions, including the Design Commission. Working closely ensures that policies and codes are aligned and can be implemented as envisioned. As our team has been working on this project, we have also started implementing some of the recommendations you'll hear about today. For example, the staff have been meeting with architects to align the city's design review process with the architect's typical design process. This will streamline the process and make more sense for how private firms do their work. We've also been developing tools to help our volunteer commissioners better navigate the design guidelines and focus their conversations in the hearings on the more relevant guidelines. As you'll see with today's recommendations, we have a lot of work to do, and we look forward to moving ahead with the challenges and the changes that we plan to make in this next year. And with that, we'd like to invite up the project team to give today's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And you all know the drill. Just make sure the green light's on and state your name for the record. Good afternoon.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Sandra Wood. I'm a Planning Manager in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. And I have part of the project team up here with me, but we're representing a larger group of people. Laura Lillard is the DOZA Project Manager, and she's in the BPS Urban Design Studio. Cara Ferravanti to my left here is the BDS Design and Historic Review Manager. And with us today is Mark Hinshaw, who is our consultant from Walker-Macy that we've been working with for the past year. With this assessment and subsequent improvements to the design review system, we were hoping to do a refresh of what our collective practice is and get all the stakeholders on the same page, whether we're commissioners, staff, community members, and applicants. To do that, we thought it was really important to hire an independent consultant to look at the system from the outside and provide us with an impartial perspective. And I think that's what you'll hear today from Mark. We've been working closely with him throughout the project. He's shown us that he has not only a depth but a breadth of knowledge about design review in the Northwest and around the country. And rather than misrepresent what Mark's credentials are, I've asked him to go ahead and introduce himself and his consultant team so you know where they're coming from, and you too can appreciate the experience that they've been bringing forward to this work.
Well, again, Mark Hinshaw. You may know my brother Roger.
Indeed, I do.
I think you do. You mentioned you a lot over dinner last night.
Uh-oh.
And I think you know some other commissioners, too.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I'm an architect and a city planner. I'm principal with Walker-Macy Landscape Architects based in Portland, but I'm actually in the Seattle office. But in past aspects of my career, I've been in Cara's position as a staff person in charge of a design review process. I've sat on and chaired a design commission for another city. I've been involved in court cases involving design review. I've written design standards and design procedures. And I've, as an architect, I've also presented in front of design commissions. So I've seen this process work over 35 years in many different communities of all different sizes, all throughout the country, and continue to advise a lot of those cities on how to make their processes better. So was absolutely delighted when we were awarded this contract because I've followed this city as sort of a second city of my own for quite some time, and I'm glad to be assisting in making the process work better here.
Great. We're grateful for your service here. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, before we get into the findings and recommendations, which I'm sure is what you're anxious to begin learning about, we thought we'd provide a brief overview for, not just yourselves, but for members of the public who may be listening, about the context of this assessment. So we have about 12 slides that we want to go through, and Cara and I will provide that overview real quick. As you know, design review is one of zoning's many tools. It nests within a larger structure of zoning. All sites in the city have a base zone. Some sites are subject to also an overlay zone or plan district regulations. Design review is one of those overlay zones. And overlay zones address specific topics such as environmental review or scenic overlays. In this case, it's where extra design attention is needed. This next slide shows the, paraphrases, the purpose of the design overlay. It's evolved over time and from being more preservation-oriented, as the first three bullets indicate, to being more growth-oriented, which is what the last bullet is about, which talks about its application to high-density development. This slide shows the milestone of design review in Portland. We have a long history of it. It's created in 1959, but didn't get widely used until 1972 with a downtown plan. After that, it's been shaping downtown and extended to the whole central city, not just to the downtown portion of central city and other areas of the city. This assessment, though, is the first time that we've looked at the tool in a comprehensive manner, and certainly to this depth. This is a map of the city of Portland, and I wanted to orient you a little bit to it because since we're talking about design review, it's nice to use that lens and what geographies it applies to. The areas that are colored in red, pink, and blue all have the design overlay. Compasses about 7% of the city, which is not surprising because a lot of our city is residentially zoned. And for single-family residential zone, we don't apply the D overlay.
So that's the lightest blue is, the lower purpley ones are not. Is that correct?
No, the red of central city and the pink of Gateway and the blue is where the design overlay currently applies. All the gray is where it does not.
I'm seeing color where this, you're saying it's gray, but I think I got it anyway.
Okay. The majority is where it's not, 93%.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
So areas in red is the central city. 75% of the central city is covered in the D overlay. The rest of the 25% is about central east side industrial area where there is no D overlay. The area in pink is Gateway Plan District. Of course, it's Portland's only regional center, and it's our highest density development outside of central city. This red and the pink, central city and Gateway, are subject to discretionary design review only. They cannot use the standards. And Cara is going to explain to you what the difference between the two is when she gets to her portion in a minute. Areas in blue also have the design overlay right now. Sometimes it was a means of preserving character and context of the areas, like Markham Hill or McAdam Plan District. Other times, it was a means to recognize areas of potential, of high growth, like Interstate and St. John's and Hollywood, some of our more recent long-range planning work. Then we also have another layer, which is with the new comprehensive plan and the mixed-use zones work that you all saw recently, the design overlay is being expanded. These areas are shown and hatched on this map. I'll draw your attention to two town centers, West Portland Park in the western part of the city and Midway at 122nd and Division. Both of those will be new areas that are subject to design review system. Several corridors, like Burnside, in the inner ring, you can see those east-west corridors of Burnside, Belmont, Hawthorne, and Division. And further north, we have Alberta and Killingsworth, and some of Lombard. So just looking at the mixed-use areas outside of central city and Gateway, this expansion increases the amount of mixed-use land that's subject to design review to 38%. Currently, it's about a quarter. So it's an expansion that we were mindful of as we were doing our work.
So I am going to briefly touch on design review as it relates to the city's development review process. This is a very simplified image of development review. And basically, what it's showing is that most projects need a permit and an inspection, where you see those yeses. But some projects need a land use review prior to permit. Design review is a type of land use review, as you see here. And just to give you some context, I've listed some other examples of land use reviews. So design review happens prior to permit, and it's dependent on the site, zone, use, or geography. You may have heard of the city's two-track system in the design overlay zone. This is a side-by-side comparison of the two tracks. On the left, you see design review, which I just described as a land use review, which is required prior to permit. And as Sandra mentioned, that's required in central city and Gateway. On the right, you see the clear and objective plan check, which is what we refer to as the standards track. And that's reviewed during the required permit. That track is allowed in design overlay outside of central city and Gateway. And the reason why we call it two-track system is that when you're outside of central city and Gateway, the applicant can choose whether or not they go through the clear and objective standards path or the discretionary design review.
Could I ask a question on that that I've never fully understood? So why in the central city and Gateway do we have this different process that has more discretion as opposed to the rest of the city? What is the value behind that two-track system?
Well, I think it stems from state law, which allows jurisdictions to choose the requirement of discretionary review for Gateway and central city, for regional centers and metropolitan area.
Why? I mean, what's, I'm still trying to get to the why.
Sure.
Why, why, why? Sound like a five-year-old.
Yeah.
What's, at the end of the food chain, what's there?
So there are densest areas where the development's supposed to be greatest, and so there's just a higher level of expectation that there be more purview over those projects.
And isn't it also that it's allowed there, whereas in the rest of the city, we're not even allowed to put the guidelines on? Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah.
That's interesting. Okay, thank you.
When you say we're allowed, is that by state law or by our own doing?
We're allowed, by state law. And my understanding is the state law says only in those two instances can you do it. The rest of the city, you can't.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I suppose we could choose not to in central city and Gateway.
Right. And just to clarify, it's for needed housing, is what the provision in the state law says.
For needed?
For needed housing. So it's, because we had a lack of housing in our 1980 comp plan, so we identified areas of the city where any housing development was needed. Therefore, we needed to allow them to go through the standards track.
Okay.
So just to point out some obvious differences between the two, oops. Yeah, thanks. As you're probably familiar, design review is subjective. It requires judgment, and it allows flexibility, whereas the standards track is objective. It does not require judgment, and it limits flexibility because you either meet the standards or you don't, and I'll get into that in a moment. With design review, there's more public outreach, and we invite public comment. Neighbors and the public could write in. They could testify at a hearing. They could even appeal a project through the land use review. And then in the standards track, it's limited public involvement. Basically, all projects prior to permit are required to request a meeting with the neighborhood association. And if there is a meeting, the development team needs to follow up with a letter. And that's the limited public involvement there. And then finally, the criteria are different, obviously. With design review, there's design guidelines, and those are created based on geography for certain areas. And then with the standards track, the criteria are the design standards in the zoning code. And I'll give you an example of the difference between a guideline and a standard. I picked these two because they both try to get at a project providing a vibrant, engaging ground level. On the left, you'll see Design Guideline A8, and it says contribute to a vibrant experience. If you read through it, it's pretty open-ended and flexible and allows creativity. There's endless possibilities in how a project can meet that guideline. Whereas if you look at the standard on the right, it's very prescriptive, and it's limiting because you either meet the standard or you don't. And if you don't meet the standard, then you need design review. And then finally--
There's no adjustment process for the standards?
That's correct.
So if you need anything even marginally different, you have to go the full-fledged other system?
That's right.
Thank you.
And the final slide that I'll talk about today just gives you a sense of what we've been looking at over the last three years. So this is commercial permits issued in design overlay zones between 2013 and 2015. And I'll just, for reference, let you know that commercial permits are required for commercial projects and residential projects with more than three units. So it's pretty much everything we look at through design review. This chart raises quite a few interesting points. So first, we've had 358 projects that underwent design review. A majority of those, 239, were located in the central city, and that, it's the first bar. Only 25 were in Gateway, that second bar. And then the remaining 94 that went through design review were located in the rest of the city. So that's those three bars under the discretionary design review heading. The right side, the right two bars, that compares projects outside of central city and Gateway. And if you recall, those are the areas that are afforded the two-track system. And what those two bars show is that there's a 60/40 split between design review and standards. 40% of projects outside of central city and Gateway chose the standards track. Obviously, the blues show alterations and additions, and clearly, the majority of the work that we review in design review is an alteration or an addition. A couple of things to note between that. The split between alterations and additions was more even outside of central city and Gateway, while inside both central city and Gateway, the alterations comprised the largest slice of the projects that we looked at. And then finally, another interesting point about new construction, which is in orange, outside of central city and Gateway, there was 35% of design reviews were new construction, which is more than the new construction in central city and Gateway. Central city had 26% new construction, and Gateway had 28% new construction.
So what is DOZA? You mentioned it's a Design Overlay Zone Assessment. And it is an assessment, so what we're doing is evaluating what's working and what's not in the design overlay. As I mentioned, to do this, we hired an independent consultant to not only conduct the assessment, but also make recommendations on ways to improve the system and tools. During this process, we asked two key questions. How can design review evolve to better respond to the changing development environment? And, can't read because of the closed captioning. What improvements could be made to both the processes and tools to allow for the greatest benefit and the least burden to all stakeholders were kind of our questions that we were asking ourselves through the process. We have been at this for about a year, so the work that you're seeing here is a year in the making. During the first couple of phases is when the assessment was taking place. Mark and his team looked at pure cities, interviewed dozens of stakeholders, had a large questionnaire that was sent to applicants in the last five years and to community groups, did site evaluations over 70 projects. All of that work is compiled in our 300-page appendix, which is your second volume of the work that you've gotten. In this Phase Three, which is the phase right before this, the findings and preliminary recommendations were presented to the Design Commission and to the Planning and Sustainability Commission. We held an open house and an online open house. There was a joint session between the Subcommittee of the PSC and the Design Commission. So lots of vetting of this, the preliminary recommendations, a briefing at the Landmarks Commission, Urban Forestry Commission, which I believe you're hearing from the Landmarks Commission today. So that's been our process, and right here we are with the final recommendations from him. After that, we'll start implementing some of these recommendations, or we'll be moving forward. And this is a quick snapshot of our preliminary thinking of how we're moving forward with our work plan. As you'll hear, the recommendations are divided into process improvements and tool improvements. Some of the process improvements don't need zoning code amendments, so those can be started immediately. And as Rebecca mentioned, and Cara can answer questions about, some of those improvements are already underway. The tool recommendations will require a full legislative project with public outreach, as is normal through a legislative process and hearings at both commissions before we come to city council, so that'll take a while longer. Because of Mark's recommendations, we anticipate beginning with updating the review criteria outside of central city first, so working outside, and then tackling central city after that. And I think you'll understand why after I let him speak. So with that, I'll pass it on to Laura to share the findings, and then Mark can share the recommendations.
Thank you.
So I'm going to run through the nine key findings from the entirety of the assessment process that Sandra went over. And there are more detailed findings in the report itself, but I'll just touch the high points. These findings, as Sandra mentioned, form the basis for the recommendations. And you can see as I go through these why it was so important for us to work with a third-party independent observer. So I'm going to do my best to channel the consultant team as I move through these quickly. So the consultant team finds that there's a lot of support for design. Design review has accomplished good work in the city over a long period of time, as Sandra went through. And overall, people value design review and design in general. However, the good work and the good intent of the design overlay zone and design review points to a need for a refresh, and there are a number of opportunities that the assessment recommends. The D overlay from what the consultant found-- from what the consultant found in the 70-plus site evaluations that they did doesn't necessarily guarantee good design. It doesn't stand in the way of it, but the results are sometimes mixed. The consultant team recognizes that there are actually a lot of factors that drive design, not just the regulations and the processes. It's also the finances, the talents of the designers, the motivations of developers, cost of materials, all sorts of things bear on the outcomes. Design review and design overlay touches on pieces of that, but there is a notion that all you need is the design overlay and the problems with new development will go away. But that's not necessarily the case. The projects that the consultant team looked at have a variety of outcomes. They, in addition to looking at projects with the de-overlay, they also looked at projects over the last five years without the design overlay, which were sort of serve as a control set for the research. And there are some outstanding efforts out there that had no design review or special standards, but there are also projects that are barely contributing positively. So the consultant team is deliberately, through their recommendations, wanting to rectify that and sort of course-correct. Coming out of the questionnaire, which you can barely read this, some of these points in the slide, the consultant team asked people, what do they think is an important quality in the built environment? And the biggest disparity in the responses between the two groups that we asked was, and those two groups are the residents and developers or architects, was in the architectural consistency with surrounding buildings, which confirmed some of the comments from the interviews. The design community, developers and applicants, architects, see design overlay, especially design review, as an opportunity for flexibility, innovation, creativity, to sort of create these one-off design solutions. Whereas the community values projects that fit in and that don't necessarily stand out. So there's sort of a disconnect in the expectations for what the outcomes should be. In the current system of design overlay, the review process isn't very well set up to recognize the vastly different scales of development. This was another finding from our consultant team. And they posit that there is a small end that seems to be put into the same sort of one-size-fits-all requirements unnecessarily. And that sort of feeds into the recommendations, which you'll see. They recognize that the small end probably gets a little bit too much attention, where there's a lot of time and effort spent. But on the larger end, where there is really a lot of impact to the community, maybe there isn't enough attention paid. So the consultant team, and you'll hear from Mark in a minute, cites the need to shift that degree of emphasis more towards the larger end of the scale and lightening up on the smaller end. The consultant team believes that in the Central City, it has benefited largely from this design overlay approach. It has obviously a longer history of using design review. It seems to have produced results that are generally very positive, not always 100% all the time, but generally better, and that those have raised the bar on design, and that they feel that this is less so elsewhere. So there's one area that is getting a lot of nurturing and maybe other areas not so much. To that point, the decision criteria that are in severe need of updating are generally outside of the Central City. Many of the tools that we have outside of the Central City, the review criteria, go back a long way in years, and it would really benefit for us to do a refresh in sort of the current thinking and recently adopted big plans. Most of our standards, for instance, come from one area and one historical context, and they're largely applied everywhere with a few exceptions. And it's just harder to do that everywhere. So we just most of all need to recognize that there are different contexts. There has been a rapid uptick in just the sheer amount and volume of projects. It's basically tripled in less than a decade. Design Commission, our volunteers meet regularly three times a month instead of two. And there's a similar uptick in staff time for their reviews, and this isn't very sustainable. They can't keep being overloaded, particularly, as Sandra pointed out, when we've expanded the design overlay. And this also could be, the consultant points out, discouraging potential commissioners from submitting their names in the pot. So this workload sort of chokes the system, but it also has compounding effects. It's taking longer amounts of times. It possibly delays projects, causes frustration, increases carrying costs, affects housing. There's just a lot of projects coming through the system. So this is another area that needs to be course corrected. The consultant team has also observed over time that there's been a shift in terms of the bigger, broader issues of context to smaller details and materials and things that are sort of finer in level of grain. And the consultant team has suggested that design review maybe goes back and just sort of re-weighs the amount of time spent on materials and details and making, to make sure that other aspects, particularly in terms of the surrounding context and the treatment of the ground floor, are being given the same amount of time and discussion. Because this particular emphasis on details seems to take a little more time, perhaps at the expense of other subject matter. So they offer some recommendations that just try to refocus back to some of the bigger-picture stuff. And finally, the consultant team has noted that this is not only an opportunity for sort of a refresh on the regulations in the system, but also in terms of just attitudes. Communities benefit, of course, from a collaborative sense of moving forward, of people feeling like we're all in the same boat and we're sharing in the sort of shaping of the city as it evolves. What the consultant has found is that people sometimes come to design review feeling like they're in different camps. There's sometimes resentment, feeling beaten up. It sometimes feels more adversarial than collaborative. And so I think they've heard a lot of raw feelings out there in some of the discussions that they've had that are just going on. And I don't think the consultant team is pointing their finger at any one group. It just seems to be universal. And it was troubling enough that, and repeated enough, that they raised it to the level of a key finding, which may take some time to rectify, but we just need to recognize it as a city and move forward. So this could be helped in just clarifying the expectations for this process and just the expectations on design overlay zone in general. So I will stop there. It's a lot to soak in. Again, there are more detailed findings in your report, but these generally set the context for the recommendations. And I will turn it over to Mark to go over.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Laura. The next page, I'm not going to go in in detail because I'm going to hit on some of the high points of each of these, but we do have, under the topic of process or procedures, seven recommendations. And then under tools, we have a larger number that I'll hit on in a few minutes. But taking some of the more important ones one at a time, we had benefit of some great data that was collected by the city over a multi-year period. And in that review of the data, we realized that a lot of more modest projects, smaller projects, were consuming a lot of the time involved in the various review procedures. And so we thought, well, what might be a way of making that situation better? Because it was sort of weighing everybody down in a horrendous kind of time-consuming effort to have all of these go through the various steps. And so one approach that we took on this was to look at the small end of the spectrum. And from my observation as an urban designer of Portland, is one of its strengths, one of its sort of national or international, if you will, even recognitions, is about the fact that there are many, many small projects that are quirky, that are oddball, that are kind of just sort of not in the norm, that people appreciate that kind of handcrafted, kind of funky, just not always great, not always wonderful, but just have an individualized, idiosyncratic, if you will, personality that projects the merchant, protects the, projects the business, reinforces the street, adds this delightful, surprising character to your neighborhoods. And that, is there a way of sort of lightening up on that end? And so we've suggested that we've kind of targeted the small end of the spectrum of new development, additions, and alterations, for maybe just taking that out of the review process altogether. They would certainly have to comply with building code standards and base zoning code standards, but to not send them through another process of review. And when we looked at that and kind of adjusted some of the threshold points, and there's not a perfection in the recommendation. I think it's still open to discussion. But we discovered that if we set them at a certain level, we could probably reduce the number going through by as much as 20%, which would itself open up more opportunities to spend time, more in-depth time with other projects. It's just humanly not possible to handle that kind of, that kind of massive number that's in the hundreds.
Let me just clarify there. Are you suggesting that they wouldn't even have to comply with the design standards?
Just whatever's in the base zoning. Just whatever's in the base zoning. And the base zoning is now being supplemented with design-oriented standards. So that's a parallel, that's a parallel effort that's going on, which will enhance the qualitative aspects of base zoning.
I will say that's a concern I'm going to want to hear more testimony about because in the comprehensive plan and the mapping process, neighborhoods pretty much accepted greater density with the promise that it would come with design overlay. So if you're proposing to then say, well, never mind, you don't have to do anything to do about design, that, I think that's difficult to reconcile with the decisions we made last year.
The, I guess our view was that as we look through the various neighborhoods that have received a lot of development, it's the larger end of the spectrum that's causing a lot of the big, severe shifts in scale and bulk and perception of intrusion on. It's not so much the smaller end of the spectrum that's doing that. Sometimes it is, but we're suggesting focusing on the projects that have the greatest sort of impact for change and disconnect.
And how are you defining large?
There's a whole series of kind of metrics that are in there. So it's for new development, it's based on lot size. That's the proposal. For additions, it's based on square feet. And for alterations, it's based on a dollar amount. So you, there is a chart that I think you have available to you that makes a finer cut of proposing these various threshold points.
Could you give me a page number, please?
Yes, it's Page 42 and 43 of the recommendations.
Thank you.
And it is divided by new construction versus alteration and additions.
So those are labeled concept.
Yes.
Does that mean there's still changes and alterations you'd like to make to these?
Well, this was, this was put forth as a way of making a point about how you could have a different set of thresholds. But they could all be argued that, well, maybe in some cases, if a smaller project is on a key, sensitive site, maybe you'd still want to do that. So we didn't go that far into making those nuances, but it's certainly legitimate for having a discussion.
Well, you went, and you proposed several different strategies. You just mentioned height, but you've also looked at square footage and dollar value. Do you have a sense of the relative strength of those proposals or those concepts?
Well, the thing, we actually did about a dozen different scenarios and had different numbers in each one. And in some cases, it didn't make any appreciable difference in change. And, well, that didn't seem like worth. And the other, it was like wiping out so much, there was only a handful left, and that didn't seem useful. So we were looking for a balance of a middle ground where the, there would be, there would be fewer coming through, but not dramatically fewer. Just enough is seeming to loosen up the system.
So walk me through the logic chain as well. So we recently had a proposal that we all looked at, and it had gone through a process. And not all, but a preponderance of the objections were just what you described, you know, the lack of scale relative to what's already there in the neighborhood. How would calling out projects with that kind of an issue be resolved differently than currently under this new strategy? Or would they be?
Well, I don't, I don't know that it would be necessarily by itself, just in that, with that description, greatly different. But it would allow more time to be spent on the higher-impact projects.
So it's really more the ability to take some off of the list rather than really changing the dynamic. So you might have more of a comprehensive review of those particular projects and take some of the other work off the table, acknowledging this is a volunteer group that does this work.
Right, right.
We don't pay them very well.
Right. But the most, actually, the most significant drop is in staff, the staff version of review.
That is mission. That's correct.
That's where most of that, that kind of effort, because staff is overloaded too, frankly. I mean, it's, it's not just, we're not, we're not just pointing finger at Design Commission.
Right. And Commissioner Udaley has brought forth some very good proposals to begin to address those issues as well.
So in there, the staff is getting more organized, getting better, getting more professional. So there's improvements already taking place in that. It's just that there's, the sheer volume is kind of logging down.
But actually, you're proposing that more would just be allowed with staff review rather than-
In some cases, that's correct. That's correct.
Which means it actually, that wouldn't necessarily change much except for the hearings because the staff provides a recommendation anyway, right?
Yes. So if I just may, this recommendation, this A1, this is the first one we're discussing today, is the one that we have talked most about, and both of the commissions have actually talked a lot about. Some of those conversations have been centered around the goals on the top of Page 42, like, why would we change the thresholds and what are we trying to achieve? Is it to reduce workload for the commission? Is it to reduce workload for the staff, et cetera? So I think there's a lot more to say in this. You know, this was Mark's recommendation, and like you said, it's concept recommendation. We'll have a lot more to discuss in the coming year as we move forward.
Well, one, you know, expectation I've had through this process, and I know you've worked hard to acknowledge it, is frankly speeding it up. And if you're taking some of the projects off the list of intensive review, at least for those proposals, it will clearly be sped up. And that, to me, is a good thing.
And there's, there's another variant on that. And that is that, as you, as you know, Gateway has been treated in the same category as the Central City. And what we're seeing in Gateway, what you're all seeing in Gateway, is another kind of development. It's not going to high-rise, it's not going to intense urban development. May happen in the future. Don't know exactly when, couldn't predict that. But it's now, the type of development is now more in the category of alterations, additions, retrofits. And people are just trying to make good economic reuse of older building stock into new stuff that serves the community. And they're being kind of discouraged in that endeavor by being suddenly thrown into a system that is the same as for, you know, the major urban development. And we heard some very touching stories from people that it's essentially, I mean, they're life savings. They do it once in their life. They're not a developer. They do it once in their life. And they're being confronted with this vast array of confusing, and, you know, they're not prepared for that. And so it's sort of, it is tended to discourage that because, why, you know, we just can't take those risks. It's their own, it's their own life, you know, their own lifeblood at stake, so to speak. So that would not, you know, that's generally, you want, and you want modest investment in an area that needs that kind of recharge. And so that was part of the thinking of, you know, shifting away from that, requiring everything in Gateway to go through the higher level of-
Probably depends on area by area. So just clarify for me, Sandra, if we accept this report, we're not saying do it like this for this particular table. So if neighbors are concerned, there will be another process to decide should the standards be different in Monoma Village than in Hawthorne?
Yes, absolutely. And you'll hear from the Design Commission and the Planning and Sustainability Commission today, and it's not their recommendations either. Today, you're hearing Mark's recommendations and some initial thoughts from those commissions.
Oh, and they're going to be bringing reports to us, or that's just part of the process that will happen after this?
Just part of the process because they've been thinking about this a little bit, but they will be involved in our next, in the legislative process to change this, yeah.
Terrific. Thank you.
And then the next, the second recommendation is dealing with the commission itself. And that has to do with creating a very clear charter for the commission. Its responsibilities are found in code and in other aspects, but maybe it's time now, because there's this been fairly long history of the commission operating, to really tune that up and give it a very clear mission and, and set of responsibilities. And that includes managing their meetings in a way that makes a smoother flow. And that means perhaps giving commissioners and the chair of the commission a clearer authority to manage those meetings and to keep them moving ahead and to be the center, be the sort of rulekeeper and the manager of that so that it just keeps moving along. And maybe at some points, people have to be, you know, have to be cut off because it just, in the interest of keeping everybody sort of on track, that, that may be necessary. So it's just tuning up the approach. It's not like it's, it's, you know, it's broken by any means. I would not characterize it that way. But any, any decision-making body benefits from sort of a discipline and a, and a clear charter, a clear mission. And that's what we believe is appropriate to happen now. So that's one of the recommendations. The third recommendation- The third recommendation has to do with a couple of things. One is focusing deliberations so that there's a clear tieback to design guidelines, that when, when subjects are being discussed, that there's reference to what the city has as adopted guidelines. So keep it focused on those subjects and not introduce a lot of collateral kinds of issues to require DARs for, for larger projects in the Central City. That isn't, that isn't a requirement right now. Some people opt for that.
And just to clarify, DARs are Design Advice Requests, and those are when applicants come to the Design Commission and discuss their project before they submit their formal application, correct?
So that, we believe that's a very useful first step is for the Design Commission in its collective wisdom to give good direction to an applicant right at the outset, very early on, before a lot of decisions are made and the project is locked down. And we see the value in that, and for larger projects that have high impact, that are affecting lots of different areas around them, that we think that's, that first step is really, really key and important. And then sort of coupled with that is the notion of trying to realign the review process with the normal design process that architects and developers go through. And what seems to be happening now is that all information about a project is requested upfront. Well, in the design process, all information about a project isn't known. You're not there yet for a lot of things. It goes through a natural sort of sorting of issues until you get down to detail. But yet, the way the system is, is working now is everything is asked for upfront. So there's this great rush to design and get everything nailed down, and then that limits the amount of influence that, that, that the review process can have. Because every, if everything's decided, it's like pulling teeth to then make any course correction or shifts. So the notion would be to put the first point of contact way back at the conceptual level where there's flexibility and not require everything upfront. And then as you go through the review, the design team is going through its refinements, and you get, you track along in the same steps, if that makes sense. The, the other thing is we, knowing that the de-overlay tool is a useful tool, an established tool, there probably are some ways of getting the word out better to both the public and applicants, that some applicants are not familiar with Portland. They step into the arena, and they're confused by your, your systems and your method. Can we have a variety of tools that involve educating everybody involved to be better participants and more collaborative participants? And that's, that's a necessary thing. People have to come to this table with the attitude that they are building a city, not just building a project. And so that means everybody needs to have that attitude, that we're in it together, and we're moving it forward, and we're making this place great. And right now, there's not quite that, it's almost, as was said earlier, an adversarial effect of, you know, are you throwing a hurdle in our way, or you're not, we're not hearing you, or we're ignoring you, or there's all these disconnects that are just not, they're not productive in the end. So everybody engaged in this, whether they're from, coming from the neighborhood side, coming from the city side, coming from the development side, the design side, needs to engage in a way that has a collaborative, respectful, civil attitude, and you're listening as much as telling. And that, that's an important attitudinal shift to have.
May I ask you a question about that? And as somebody obviously with a lot of experience, and you mentioned that you'd served in various capacities around design review in other communities. When I meet with people who are proposing projects, they often talk about their limited partners, their institutional investors, their need to hit certain ROI targets. In other words, there's strong economic incentive and agency incentive for them to focus on the project, and does the project pencil out? And can they get it to market in time to capture whatever market opportunity they see through the process? I would assume that in this current economic environment, there is a lot of that. To what degree are developers coming to the table with the attitude that you just described? And is there anything unique to Portland about trying to create that attitude? In other words, if I'm a developer in Chicago and I come to Portland with a multifamily proposal, am I perplexed by that community, building a community spirit and intentionality? Or is that something that a developer would expect to see in any large community with a large-scale project of the kind that you're describing for this process?
Well, I think, you know, the record is kind of mixed. There are certainly very thoughtful development teams that put together great projects and think it out, and are sincere in their, in their efforts. And there are others that are just looking at sort of simply getting a project in the ground. That's, other things are of less importance. And I think what sometimes they, from folks outside, they don't appreciate how, the, the passion with which people really care about this place. There are other communities where that is less so, frankly. In, in other areas that I've observed, there's just, you know, it's, it's, it's just a project.
But aren't, aren't we competing with those other areas for project? In other words, you know, getting back to the discussion we had this morning about, you know, we need all kinds of affordability in the housing. And it particularly concerns me, and one of the reasons I was very motivated to participate in, in your process, at least at arm's length, is because I'm hearing stories from even those who offer a significant amount of affordability, saying this process is, is cumbersome, it's time-consuming, it's adding cost, it's creating havoc for our financing stack. How do you reconcile those things in this process?
Well, you know, with the, with the specific lens of affordability, I have to say that that was not part of our scope to look at that, but we did touch on it. But we, in fact, we, one of the team members that we had in this effort was Leland Consulting Group, who you may be familiar with, market economist, they have a long history of working with developers in, in cities all over the country. And if you look in the, if you look in the appendix, the big thick thing, the very first one is a memo from them. And they point out that really, design review procedures and design review standards are, while they're part of the whole mix, they're not the driver of it. There are so many other factors that are bearing down on the, you know, whether a project pencils, whether it makes sense in an area, the size of it and all of that, that while this is a factor, it isn't really the one that's necessarily causing issues. It certainly can be better, and that's what we're recommending here, all of these recommendations are in that vein, of making it operate more smoothly, more effectively, more efficiently. And, but we weren't asked to specifically look at the affordability issue.
Okay.
We knew it was a high, you know, high concern to the...
There, and, and that's right, it's, it's inferred. And their, their analysis of your recommendations was that it could potentially speed up throughput, which, you know, I, I won't speak for developers because I'm not one, but I assume speeding up throughput is, you know, potentially reflected through lower costs, or at least less market risk. I would argue that point.
Yeah. Well, I think one of the keys is what I said earlier of, if you want to intervene in the, in the design of a project, catch it early before everything is nailed down and priced out and approved by all of the various parties involved in the development sector. That's too late. So you need to grab it while, before that time, and then you've got greater opportunity to influence the outcome. So it's, it's a, it's a whole combination, a whole bundle of things that we're talking about here. Not, and there's no one silver bullet that kind of addresses everything.
Thank you.
So we also thought it was fair that neighborhood folks get better notice of projects. Right now, that does seem to be a weak point in the city's development review process, where if you look around at other major metropolitan cities, they announce projects very boldly on sites. An impending proposal is right there in your face, you drive by it, walk by it, you see it, and that's kind of low-hanging fruit. That's not a big deal. It's just putting up a sign with the appropriate information, the contact person, and the city, what the proposal is. It's pretty standard practice. It just wasn't, hasn't been done here, other than a small little, I think it's this little thing on a stick. But really tell people what's going on, you know? And also, it's fair because, in terms of notice, public notice, to give notice to renters. I mean, you've got a much bigger rental, renter population now than you've had in the past. And it was almost, just sending it to property owners is almost that holdover from, you know, two centuries ago when only property owners could vote. Well, you know, renters are now part of the equation, and they need to know what's going on around them. And so it's not a big deal. Just post office puts occupant or resident or box holder on the thing, you don't have to name them, but at least they get an opportunity to do that. And the city is also looking at how to use web-type products to get the word out in, in the more current technology of things, a lot of people use that. So you have to do multiple ways, and it just, a lot of people just don't want to, just want to know what's going on. They're not necessarily going to oppose it, they just want to know what's going on around their life, and that's enough. They just, they don't like seeing the fence go up, like, what is that? Who approved that? What is that going to be? That's, that makes people crazy. So just make life easier for the folks that are being affected by new development. Again, I think low-hanging fruit to do that. Doesn't require code change, doesn't require zoning change, just an administrative process. So the last thing, just to touch on, on the process, is that we've recommended a number of things that all kind of operate together. I wouldn't pull anyone out and say that's the solution. And to give it a time to work and see how they make the system better, to evaluate it, to establish some metrics, to give it a development cycle at least, maybe two, and size it up. Did these make a difference? If they didn't, then you might go back to the last recommendation, which is, maybe it's too much for one board to handle. I wouldn't leap to that right now because, first of all, that sets in motion a whole bunch of other infrastructure that would be complex to put in motion, not the least of which lining up all those people that would have to be filling those positions. But keep that in the back pocket, that that might, I mean, it's certainly not uncommon for other cities to have multiple review bodies. That's not uncommon. So, but don't assume that that's the solution right now, because I think there's some other organizational, procedural, and, and standard things that can be, can be helping move the system along better. And so I, that's, that's our thought on that. We know that's come up, can't we just have a second commission? I think that's not probably the best direction to go in right off the bat. See how, see how these other things work, and then, you still, you still have that option. Doesn't preclude you from going there. So give it some, give it some time, see, see how these are being affected, and then, you know, consider that. I just want to touch on the tools. There's a whole bunch of things, but there's some minutia there that's probably not worth talking about here. But we, we did feel that we should highlight the fact that there's some standards that do need to be brought up to date. Some of them go back thirty years. Do need to rewrite those. That, that's, that's only fair. I mean, the world has changed, Portland has changed, neighborhoods have changed, there's a different set of circumstances. People are familiar with higher density now, they weren't maybe thirty years ago. And there's some terms that aren't clear, that are confusing to people. Just clean up the system, bring it up to date, simplify it, consolidate it. There's a dozen or so different booklets out there that say sometimes the same thing, sometimes not the same thing, or using different terminology, and it's frankly probably causing some people to be confused. I mean, what does the city really want? You know, there's all these, all these things out there, and they're not really working together as best they could. So just bring that, bring that up to date. Syncing the language and the standards and the guidelines so they have a parallel, you're trying to accomplish the same thing through those two tracks, and that's not always clear. And so just get that to, to be tuned up. To, to focus on three, what we call tenants of design, which it provides a, a kind of an organizational discipline, so buckets that, that subjects can be discussed in. And one is recognizing that new development always goes into an existing context. What is that neighborhood? What is that district? What is, what, what's going on there? And demand that the development team think about it. What's the neighbor next door? What's the neighbor behind? What's the, what are, what's happening along the street frontage? What is the history of this district? How is it evolving? What are the positive things? What are the negative things? Ask for that thoughtful design. Actually, most good architects do that anyway. They just do it internally. They know they need to do it. They need to understand where they're putting that project. So it's leveling the playing field, expecting that from everyone to do a thoughtful overview of where their project is being placed. And I think that's really only, only fair and only appropriate to the, the neighborhood folks that have been there, you know, for many, many years. The second is to really focus on the public realm, and already that's happened. I mean, the commission has spent a lot of time on that, that subject, and staff has too. But put a finer point out, really make sure that what I call the first thirty feet vertically of the building, that people can see and touch and react to, and the first thirty feet horizontally, the sidewalk, the public realm, the, the street trees, the lights, the seating, make sure that room, if you will, that shared living room really is the best it can be, and the most varied and diverse and artfully done and expertly done, really thoughtfully done, really, really work that. And insist that people think about it. I mean, don't show the building where the ground floor is like this big, you can't see even, see what's going on. Blow it up. Take it, examine where the entrance is, what it looks like, what are the windows, what's the detailing, what's the, what's the overhang for weather protection, what's the sense of entering? And work it like you work your own living room.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you maybe try to summarize because I'm conscious we've got an hour and the people waiting to testify, so?
And then the last is just, the, the third leg of the stool, so to speak, is bearing down on quality and permanence and what all that might mean. So there's a whole host of other recommendations for standards that are more sort of detailed, but I think that's, that sort of captures the essence of it.
Thank you very much for your work.
Excellent.
So we do have some testifiers signed up. Carla said about eight testifiers, but before they start, we'd like to invite the chairs of both the Design Commission and the Planning and Sustainability Commission to come and share some of the initial thoughts those commissions had.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
Thank you for all your work.
Hello and welcome, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We didn't talk about who goes first. Are you okay with that?
Go from left to right, I guess.
I'll go after her.
Sounds good.
It doesn't matter.
So good afternoon. I'm Catherine Schultz. I'm Chair of the Planning and Sustainability Commission, also known as the PSC. Some of you may know or remember that I also served on the Design Commission, seems like years ago, about over five years ago. And I am an architect, so I've also had the pleasure of being an applicant. Today, but today I'm here representing the PSC, and I am joined by my fellow Commissioner, Eli Spivak.
Thank you.
As stewards of the Comprehensive Plan and Climate Action Plan, the PSC is keenly interested in developing and maintaining the zoning code to carry out the goals and policies of those plans. As our city grows, we're vested in ensuring high-quality development and an efficient design review process that aligns with those goals and policies. We therefore support the recommendations of the DOZA report. During the next phase of DOZA, we encourage additional focus and refinement in a number of areas as outlined in our letter. Today, I'll highlight just a few of the more critical points. One, the design review thresholds need to be right-sized based on impact. Removing regulatory barriers will allow innovation and testing of new systems, and it can give small developers and property owners a chance to succeed while furthering the equity goals in our comp plan. This is in alignment, this next one, with Commissioner Fritz's comment, the thresholds need to be refined in conjunction with updating the community design standards and the community design guidelines. That will ensure that projects of lesser impact, if they're not part of the full discretionary process, will meet a clear set of standards and maintain the unique character of our centers and corridors. The community involvement is a critical component of the comp plan. We strongly support improving public education and notification to ensure inclusivity. The purpose of the design overlay requires updating to reflect our goals and policies with particular attention to equity. Additionally, it needs to reconcile the tension between compatibility and change and clearly outline the objectives of discretionary review. We support removing FAR, height, and setbacks from design reviews per view in order to meet our comp plan density goals. meet our comp plan density goals. Many of the report's recommendations are applicable to historic resource review. The Historic Landmarks Commission needs to be included in this process as well. The implementation and recommendations in this report is critical to supporting the increased intensity of development in our centers and corridors while ensuring that the public has the opportunity to engage in the process. We believe that further development and implementation of the DOZA recommendations will ensure that we effectively support high-quality design during this period of rapid growth in our city. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Eli to say a few words.
Thank you.
No, go ahead.
We'll go out in this order. My name's Eli Spivak. I'm a developer and general contractor and serve on the Planning Commission for a little bit over the past year. When people, so I'm going to add a few detailed points beyond what Kat mentioned. When people hear central city, most people think of probably downtown and don't realize how expansive the central city is. It includes the lay district out to 16th, the east side out to 12th, Lower Albina, Goose Hollow, a lot of residential neighborhoods and commercial mixed-use zones. And one suggestion we had is to acknowledge that some of the parts of the central city are more, really more similar to the mixed-use corridors than they are to downtown. And so, one option going forward would be to say that although Portland is allowed to treat the highest level of mandatory discretionary review for all of central city, we don't have to do the whole central city. Portland could select sub-districts, there are 10 districts in the central city, and say that the highest level of design review applies to those. And other portions of the central city would also have design review, but it would be more of the level of the mixed-use zones. So, that would be one recommendation we came up with. We also had the chance through the DOZA process of having joint meeting with the Designer Review, Design Commission, which was really informative for us and I think for them. And it's impossible for any volunteer to serve on both those bodies at once. But, we recommend that the Design Commission, as they do their annual presentations to city council, that they also bring those annual presentations to the Planning Commission so we understand more the issues that they're wrestling with and have at least that form of communication between the commissions. On the three tenets, being context, elevating the public realm, and quality and sense of permanence, we thought those are a really helpful way of categorizing the lenses through which the Design Commission reviews projects. We also had some debate over whether there should be prioritization. There was not consensus on the Planning Commission or that, but I'll speak for myself personally. I hope the Design Commission really focuses on the public realm element because in representing the public, that's the primary way we interact with our buildings, our landscape. And some commissions, like in Denver, they don't even, the Design Commission doesn't even look beyond the first few floors of a building. They really focus in on having a fantastic ground floor. We rely on the Design Commission for that because if we're adding density to some areas, we want people to have positive experiences with that increased density. One other recommendation that we support from the report particularly is reducing the threshold for smaller projects for designer view, specifically to encourage fine-grain development patterns, funkiness, only applicable to smaller buildings on smaller size, like 5,000 square feet or less. Because thinking back in time, some of the most treasured, commercial and mixed-use zones we have were built exactly that way. Small buildings on small lots, 5,000 or less. And those are people are saying we want to see more of, so we should make that easy to do. And lastly, to the roles that the different commissions have, you guys are experiencing right now the situation of when something gets appealed to city council. And through the Planning Commission process we go through to establish certain entitlements like FAR, height limit, and setbacks, we take enormous amounts of public input, set the rules for that. And developers, when they look at property, they expect reasonably that they can do what the zoning code says they can do. Currently, the Planning Commission, sorry, sorry, the Design Commission has in the code a series of factors through which they can review projects. And it includes things that are more design-related, like colors, building materials, open areas, architectural style, placement. And it also includes in the list, dimensions, height, bulk, lot coverage. So, really, as currently authorized, the, the charter for the Design Commission spans design-related things and also things many people think of as entitlements. We think that this sets up a stage where the public and you and Design Commission get drawn into things that have already been litigated through the Planning Commission and through city council to establish those entitlements. And concur with the recommendation of this report to clarify the scope of these two different commissions. We on the Planning Commission rely on the Design Commission to ensure that these buildings have, you know, fantastic, enhance the public realm, are well-designed, have a higher level of scrutiny than other projects in the city. And if they don't, then the Design Commission's going to take the heat. If there are serious situations where we zone higher density in certain areas, more intense development, because we've got massive public infrastructure there, then if people are unconcerned about that, either we went too high or too low, then we can and do take the heat. And I fear that if the commissions have overlapping purviews, then what will happen is you'll see many more projects being appealed to city council, in which case you will have to be the arbiters of these issues and take public testimony time, which won't serve developers well because they'll go through a more involved process. It won't serve the public well because it'll spend more time. Whenever there's an opportunity to weigh in on something people care about, they're going to take that opportunity and it will use more of your time. So, I hope that as part of this process, we can clarify roles so that we can support one another in the elements we focus on.
Thank you, sir.
And so, you don't need our permission to, for the Planning and Sustainability Commission to invite the Design Commission to have a joint meeting, right?
Correct.
So, I think that's a good idea, but I'm also concerned about a bait and switch that the whole of last year when we were discussing heights and appropriate zoning, there was the fail-safe that things would go through a design review and that's, the practice for, for many, many years has been that you may not be able to get to the entire height that you may be entitled to because you can't meet the design guidelines and that has been a safeguard for neighborhoods.
Can I weigh in on this for a second? Because I, this is an important point to make with all of this. I'm, I'm sorry if I interrupted. I apologize. Go ahead.
I say, we may not all be on the same page on that. I think that, for some, the expectation is that entitlements are there and Design Commission has a different purview.
Well, we do need to have, and whether it's part of this project or a separate project, but it is something that communities are extremely concerned about. And as I said, which I, when viewing what we put on the comprehensive plan last year on the maps, felt I could do some of them because I knew there'd be design review and that compatibility would be taken into it.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll say, I think compatibility is definitely part of the design criteria. Maybe I'll, Kat speak.
No, I'd like to, I'm sorry, Eli, but just clarify one thing. I don't think, I think we need, we're agreeing that the thresholds need to be looked at and it could be, it's just what scale needs to go through design review, let's say, in all of the corridors. And perhaps there's a smaller scale that we can make some pretty clear guidelines that the neighborhoods are comfortable with. And you're absolutely right. The neighborhoods have to be a part of process of perhaps what we can put in the code that makes them comfortable.
I heard that, but what I heard Commissioner Spivak say is that developers should be entitled to the maximum FAR height bulk that they're allowed under the zoning code. And that is a change in practice that would need a lot of discussion.
Very good. Good afternoon.
All right. Good afternoon. David Ward, Chair of the Design Commission. And I'd just like to, before I start my part, I'd like to just tail, dovetail on what they've talked about. I, we actually looked at this and researched for the last four years where commission has, has weighed in on height and FAR. And there is no case for base FAR where we've reduced it or height. We've increased height, actually, through modifications on, on base height and base of, base FAR. Where we have reduced FAR, I think on two or three cases, was on bonus FAR. So, there's a distinction there on what is by right, the base FAR in height and what you earn through bonuses. So, just to set the record straight. So, this almost might be a solution looking for a problem. I'm not sure. But, I just want to start out my section by saying, on behalf of all the commissioners, we love Portland. Can I say that out loud? Is that right? We love Portland. We commit so much of our time to making it a better city and so why else would we do this other than we love Portland? And we serve as a bridge between the vision and planning process of the future of Portland and the realities of building design and development and construction. And in this role, we see a very personal side of change, the challenges, successes, and impacts to neighborhoods, applicants, staff, and to commissioners. Over the past year, we've offered a perspective to DOZA. And for the most part, our perspective has been incorporated into the report, but we still have some differences. I'm not going to go over those in any detail, but there is much work to be done. As Mark stated at his last briefing to Design Commission, Portland has a reputation for moving the bar forward in terms of urban design and design excellence, and urban excellence. And to retain the qualities of Portland that make it special, Design Review and Design Commission will continue to be an important part of that process. And to continue to move the bar forward, we feel there are three points that need to be incorporated in all discussions as we do move forward. One, to affirm the aspirations and qualitative goals of design review. Two, to craft a reasonable process that's fair, open, and evenly applied. And we could argue what reasonable means, but starting with that term seems to be middle ground. And three, update the set of tools to support numbers one and two, such as updating the design guidelines might be the first part of that. The Design Commission is in support of the DOZA report and as we move forward, we are fully committed to the design review process and the product for the betterment of the city we all love. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Very good. So, we have public testimony now. And when people come up, please just state your name for the record. If you're a lobbyist, please state so. If you're with an organization, it would be helpful if you state that as well. We'll have three minutes of testimony. 30 seconds before your three minutes is up, you'll see a yellow light. And then, when your time is up, there's a red light and the world's most obnoxious beeping noise. You can't miss it. Carla.
The first three are John Spencer, Bob Boilu, and Jean Galick.
Come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
So far, so good.
Well, my name is Bob Boilu. I'm an architect and planner in the city of Portland. I first want to take some time and reintroduce our group to the city council. For almost 20 years, the AIA Urban Design Panel has been actively involved in the Portland design process, even hosting for the last four years, a, with Mayor Hale's, a state of a design discussion. And I believe I owe the mayor a phone call pretty soon to talk about the next four years.
Very good.
In the past, before DAR, Design Advice Request, was developed, the AIA Urban Design Committee acted as a resource for design projects first coming before the Design Commission. Five years ago, we joined forces with the American Planning Association, APA, the American Society of Landscape Architects, ASLA, to create the AIA, APA, ASLA Urban Design Panel. We're in search of a better name if you have it. But, many of our members, panel members, either come before the Design Commission for presentations or projects, or in John's case, has served as a past chair of the Design Commission. Recently, in 2004, teaming up with the City Club of Portland, sponsoring design workshops at the Center of Architecture Building on design review process in the city with our three professions, design commissioners, city staff, developers, and the public. We continued this process with Mark Henshaw through the DOZA process, hosting several workshops with our professional colleagues, long meetings with our executive committee that both John and I serve on, to move the process forward. We strongly support this study and have expressed that in the support of our position paper that hopefully you've had a chance to read. I'm going to let John discuss a little bit more in detail our recommendations and how we hope to proceed and continue our involvement through the design review process of the report and how our group in the future can provide a conduit to our three professional organizations.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's John Spencer. I'm an urban designer and planner in Portland and served with Bob on the executive committee of the Urban Design Panel. I'd like to maybe echo David's comment about our group because I think we're a group of professionals that also truly love Portland and we're, our, our professional lives are really kind of, and our decisions about being here have a lot to do about the quality of this place. Portland is a model for the integration of the public realm with private development over time and is based on rigorous planning and solid process, and that's the design review process. Maintaining and improving design review is critical to enhancing Portland's international reputation as a livable city. We support Mark's recommendations to focus on the public realm and on context as, as really the two, the two kind of key elements of, of design review and particularly related to maintaining this place as a, as a quality place to live and a quality place to, to visit. We enthusiastically support the work done as part of the DOZA project and the recommendations that are in the final report. We urge the city, both the bureaus that would be involved in this, in this council, to aggressively implement all of the priority recommendations contained in the report as soon as possible. A long or piecemeal approach to taking on the, these implementation recommendations will, we don't think will solve the problems that Mr. Henshaw has convincingly identified. We would like to be here in less than a year voicing our support for basically taking all the implementation recommendations, the priority implementations, going through the necessary process to vet those detailed recommendations and coming before the council and supporting those, those recommendations. We also think that the, some of the, some of the recommendations that really are geared around revising and re-looking at community design standards and design guidelines, right now the design guidelines are in, you know, 60, 70 pages of, of documentations. Let's make the hard decisions and get that number down to 10 or 15 pages. Finally, our group, and again, they're, they're made up of professionals that are involved in design review and development all, you know, around in the Portland region and elsewhere. We pledge to help and participate and really contribute to this next step, step of implementation. We've been very active participants so far and we would like to continue to do that.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Hi. I'm Jeanie Galick. I'm not with them.
Can you pull the, pull the microphone just a little bit closer to you, please?
In the mic.
My name is Jeanie Galick and I'm a longtime Blue Atlantic Greenway advocate. Thank you. And I've been in front of all of the commissions and council many times because of that. Through DOZA, we should not just streamline the processes, but ensure better planning solutions. And one important way to add, but, one important way is to add both a natural resource expert and a sustainability expert to the Design Commission. Yes, expand it. As climate and environmental issues become ever more critical, it is vital that they are considered as an integral element of any design. The current makeup of the Design Commission makes it inevitable that little weight or attention is given to these, these issues. This is a real opportunity for Portland to demonstrate its leadership by making sure that climate, sustainable practices, and natural resources are considered with each design, especially all these major designs. Secondly, the north and south reaches of the Greenway really need help. Their guidelines are flabby and they're outdated. Council can make this a planning priority. And development is happening now. Until that time, though, there are steps that council can take through the DOZA process to foster a healthier, reverine environment. Current regulations call for a paltry 25-foot setback. We all recognize that that is too little, but until it is expanded, as it should be, DOZA could require new construction or remodels or retrofits along the Greenway to have stepbacks in height with low elevations and lush native landscaping facing the trail. This would enhance both wildlife habitat and the user experience. And it's very important that the Greenway and the development along the Greenway have a type III review. And lastly, as a neighborhood activist, I would say it's very important to, to somehow conflate the community standards with the key tenets of any district design overlay. We have spent years as citizens forming those design guidelines for a particular district. I happen to be in McAdam Plan District. And it's important that the elements that we fought so hard for are retained. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, all three of you. Next three, please.
The next two will be Madeline Kovacs and Doug Klotz. The next two will be Madeline Kovacs and Doug Klotz.
And are these the last two?
We have two more who want to come together.
Two more. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. All right. I'm Doug Klotz. I live in the Richmond neighborhood, and I have for 25 years. I'm going to add to my, oh, actually. To add to my remarks because I see a lack of explanation of the state mandate for clear and objective standards. I don't know if you've heard of other cities where Design Review and the processes like that are used to keep housing out of neighborhoods. It's a tool that neighborhoods use to slow down and, and keep housing out of their neighborhoods. So the state law, apparently since the 80s, I didn't know when it started, requires that for, for need, where needed housing is being built, and that's another thing to define, but that clear and objective, there has to be an alternative path. You can, you could have the option of Design Review, or there should, there has to be a set of clear and objective standards that the developer or builder can come in, meet these standards, submit their permit and get the permit. And that's, Portland, and that was, you know, that was to keep housing from being held up by processes that are sometimes unclear, vague, discretionary, and, you know, it could be a Design Commission or council, any, anybody that has discretion over it is sometimes, you know, in some political situations, used to slow things down or stop them. So that's why the state law is passed, was passed, in my understanding. Portland, the law allows Portland to have mandatory Design Review in Central City and Gateway. At least that's how my understanding is how Portland and the state worked out a deal. And it will, that will be true in the expanded areas as well, and the Design Review in the new areas will still be part of that, you know, where there has to be that two-track process. Now, some developers will choose to go, use the Design Review because they don't want to meet the standards. The standards, you know, some developers, an architect friend of mine says, well, it's pretty easy to meet the design standards. You do this, this, and this, and that. We prefer to do that because they're doing a three-story apartment building. They don't want to go through the hassle and the uncertainty of what might happen if they go through Design Review and a design, the staff or commissions, you know, gets something in their mind to do, and it turns out to be an expensive thing, so they prefer to avoid that. Anyway, so that's, that's why we have those standards, and I would be in favor of keeping that arrangement. Actually, the recommendation of the report is to remove that mandatory Design Review from Gateway, because, to help the small, small property owners who are trying to do these small projects. Okay. So, anyway, what I haven't hit is, I agree with what Commissioner Schultz said from keeping the, making it clear that when Type III or Type II Design Review is applied, these should not be reduced, the entitlements in the zoning code for height or FAR, or otherwise reduce the bulk of the building. And Commissioner Wark from the Design Commission seemed to say that, basically the same thing. They had not been doing that, so there shouldn't be an issue with putting that in the, in the prescriptive code in there. I think that covered it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Madeline Kovacs, and I'm the coordinator for the Portland for Everyone Coalition. We urge the city to support the recommendation to clarify that the scope of Design Review doesn't include changes to base entitlements given by long-range planning and zoning, potentially reducing the number of homes in designated high-capacity areas, to better align development and Design Review process to lessen delays and costs, which can impact both availability and affordability, to allow the type of review to be appropriate for the size of the project with clear and objective standards, to consider where outside the central city the D overlay may not be appropriate, and when it's, and weigh its application carefully with potential impact on affordability where that is an issue. In particular, consider allowing nonprofit developers and/or affordable housing projects to meet a different set of clearly defined standards. We also encourage the city to consider that any limitations on entitlements and therefore new housing will, by virtue of the recently adopted Inclusionary Housing Program, also result in potential loss of permanently affordable housing in our most well-connected amenity-rich areas. There are two recommendations by the Planning and Sustainability Commission we also wanted to highlight, which is the great improvements to public process to increase inclusivity and our commitment to equity in the city, and differentiating between more intense central city and sub-district and those less intense subjects, sub-districts to reflect the unique character of those neighborhoods. Lastly, we encourage the city to always consider the D overlay, and any project, really, in light of its long, of its stated long-range planning goals, namely the Climate Action Plan and the Comprehensive Plans Equity and Anti-Displacement Goals. And I can't resist, because I have a minute left, and I am a, I come to urban planning and housing advocacy from actually a decade of youth climate organizing and advocacy at the UN and beyond. I want to end with a quote that I read today from one of my favorite current authors on the topic. "The benefits of compact communities are ubiquitous in the past three decades researched on cities. Indeed, the main lesson of that entire body of work is that transit-rich, walkable, mixed-use, mixed-income communities are critical ingredients to a sustainable future. Local officials shouldn't have to prove this any more than they have to prove that hydro- and wind-powered electricity is better for the planet than the coal power that many Rust Belt cities rely on." And that's it.
Good. Thank you. Good quote.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
The last two are Kristin Miner and Julie Livingston.
Last but not least.
Very good.
My name is Kristin Miner, and I'm the vice chair of the Historical Landmarks Commission. So I want to first thank the Planning and Sustainability Commission for recognizing that landmarks should be involved. We did have a briefing on this and wrote you a letter. I also want to acknowledge Commissioner Yu Daily came to our retreat last week, and that was a really nice gesture, so I wanted to appreciate, you know, appreciate that in public. There's a couple components of the proposal that I'd like to pull out of our letter, so I'm certainly not going to read everything, but just make a couple highlights here. And then I'd like to also address a couple of concepts that we heard here today. So first off, I will start with just the recommendation really for changing the thresholds of review. For the Landmarks Commission, of course, our processes align very closely with that of the Design Commission. In fact, pretty much identical, so many of these recommendations would apply directly to our commission. But then our goals and responsibilities shift a little bit. So I would say that in terms of the thresholds for determining a review, as it relates to the Landmarks Commission and Design Commission, I would say how much a project affects the public realm should not lose its importance in terms of where that threshold is. I mean, we've been talking a lot about cost and bulk of a project, but there's also just the factor of changes at the street level having a much greater impact on the public realm than changes, you know, for instance, at the rooftop of a project. And, and that actually ties in to the three tenets of design that this, that this study calls out, one of being elevate the public realm. Another thing I want to talk about is just to strongly encourage and push the idea of public engagement even further. I think the study is asking for greater input from neighborhood associations. We strongly support that idea and in fact would encourage applicants to reach out even in the planning phase of a project, and perhaps then have the neighborhood associations report back to BDS that they have heard from that applicant, so make them an important step in the process. Finally, though, I, I would like to address the idea that height and FAR be taken out of Design Review and possibly Historic Review. So it's been suggested.
May I could we extend the same credency to the?
Certainly.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's been suggested that these two kind of measures of the bulk of a project are entitlements. And for the Landmarks Commission in particular, but also for Design Review, this idea would remove the ability of the commission to take context into consideration. So, you know, the idea that we can get a project fully into an approvable context just by color or small-scale design changes is incorrect. So I personally think the issue is that developers aren't perhaps fully understanding that there may not be a route to the full quote-unquote entitlement on each and every site. I would say that in my experience, Landmarks Commission has never had to actually tell a developer, we can't get there. We have worked with developers through sometimes three, four hearings, if, if necessary, to try to help them reshape the bulk of their project, and we almost always can get to yes. But taking that tool away from either commission would be a problem, and I think especially in historic districts. So that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. So last but not least, we'll invite Sandra, Laura, Cara, and Mark back to the table to see if there's any further questions or concluding thoughts. We're obviously not going to take our vote today. This is a non-emergency first reading, so we're simply going to pass it on to the second reading.
I think it's reports, I think we do, actually.
You're correct. I'm incorrect. It is a report, so we'll, we'll entertain a motion in a second at the will of the City Council.
So we have a, about an inch-thick report here from our consultant. We heard the challenge laid down by the AIA to get this done in a year. Tell me we can do that. I mean, I think, I mean, sometimes processes overcome.
You also, I think, heard, I think you've heard some tensions also from some of the testifiers and some differences of opinions. I've probably done 25 projects in the city. Recap, as you know, if I've brought eight of those forward, those are minor policy technical amendments where we all agree to what the problem statement is, and we all know what the, what the parameters are, and those take a year, principally because we try to do quite a bit of public outreach. When we work with community members, they like two months at a minimum for comment because community groups meet once a month, and if we meet, lose their cycle, then we come forward. So our legislative process itself takes six months going through one, going through one commission. This is a little more complicated in that we have two commissions, if not three. So I think that's one of the challenges, and one of the things we're going to be working on in the next two months is this talking internally and speaking to our commissioners in charge about what the work plan is, what can be done quickly, maybe in a year's time. Certainly some of the process improvements that don't require code amendments, that aren't legislation and law changes. And Cara's been working with her team, as, as has been mentioned, on already instituting some of those implementation changes. So some of the answers are, we're already there, and some of them are.
Yeah, I guess, you know, with all due respect, and I have a lot of respect for you, Sandra, and all of you, but, I mean, at some point, you know, if this turns into another comprehensive plan process, it really undercuts, I think, what we're trying to do here.
No, it won't be. Definitely not that.
Well, you're telling me it's going to take more than a year.
I'm tail.
And you're, I would, if I put you, you'd probably say it's going to take a couple of years.
I would say eighteen months.
And I think that undermines, that undermines the urgency of getting this done. Eighteen months?
Well, we can, eighteen months is my guess right now. I haven't scoped the project yet, and I certainly don't have agreement amongst our commissioners in charge and our bureau directors on what the project looks like and if we are going into having, doing outreach to historic districts, for example, if that's included or not, et cetera.
And what's, what's the budget for this project?
We have two FTE at BPS and at BDS. I'm not sure what it is, because we haven't talked about it.
We'd probably have, probably two staff, maybe half-time, working on it.
Two half-time staff and two full-time at BPS? Is that, did I hear that correct?
Two full-time. Yep.
Okay. I, I hate to be skeptical, but sometimes I think that we do these projects and we stretch them out because we want to keep people employed, we want to keep people busy, and I think we're, I really, I would really be disappointed if this is dragging on eighteen months, two years from now, we're still talking about ways to improve the design process. And I think we've had a lot, we have a great consultant's report here. Somebody who's sort of outside the market, spent a lot of time talking to all the commissions and boards you've already mentioned.
And when I say eighteen months, I mean eighteen months to effective date, not eighteen months to get to City Council, so it's one year to get to City Council. But again, as I said, we haven't begun scoping. We've been concentrating on what's in the report, having these discussions, and the next two months we'll be, we'll be scoping and working with our commissioners in charge to, to move this forward. We're excited about a lot of the recommendations, as you've heard many people are, so we'll be in touch about that.
Okay. And then I'm rather struck when the consultant said that affordable housing was really tangential to this whole effort. Again, you know, from my perspective, affordable housing was really the genesis of this whole effort. So what am I missing here?
So we did have a, a sub-consultant working on the affordable housing aspect piece of it, and really we were trying to set the framework for all of Design Review, and as we've discussed, Design Review is a subset of, of development review in, in total. Unfortunately, we didn't delve as deep into affordable housing as we would have liked to. We certainly have in the Gator process that, that Mayor Wheeler and Commissioner Yu Daily have been discussing, and we've been delving deep into it in that respect. And, and like Mark mentioned, Leland Consulting Group has looked at the recommendations to see what the effect would be on affordable housing, and, and has some findings in there.
Are you sure?
That wasn't the genesis of the project, though, was it? I mean, the charge, the consultant was not, see how Design Review affects affordable housing.
Right. So the.
I guess, you know, it's probably not, it's probably not in your contract, but I think the genesis for these discussions we've been having over the past year or so have been related in part to affordable housing projects, objecting, and maybe objecting is too strong a word, but having strong concerns about the time and expense of Design Review, the expense added to projects by Design Review. So I think, you know, if memory serves me correctly, and I'm not always the best on timelines, but there was certainly an axis of connection there.
If I could just add to it, I'm Joe Zenter, chief planner for the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and there's an axis of connection. What kicked this off was in the comprehensive plan, you may have remembered, the desire to increase, try to simplify the ability to build in mixed-use centers was really most of it, where we're going to see a significant amount, what, 50% of the growth over the next 20 years. We need to build units, we need to build them in those places, we need to smooth that process, we need to meet community expectations. And one of the tools that was on the table, Commissioner, was let's use Design Review. And so we were saying we're going to expand Design Review at the same time, like from the testimony you heard, there's constituents out there who, based on workload, which I think even the Design Commission would agree, and other factors, didn't feel like that would work. So we need Design Commission, we needed to settle that issue. That was one of the motivations for it. And then since then also, we've gone through the Gator process and this whole idea of the cost that actually, early on, you had hearings of this with the Housing Bureau here, of what kind of role that permit processes play in the cost of affordable housing. So it had two tracks from Commissioner, from Mayor Hale's office. I knew we started with the one related to the comp plan, too.
Yeah, so I'll jump into this fray, because this is a good fray to jump into. From my perspective, my priority clearly is more housing supply sooner at a lower cost with less of a hassle factor while not creating garbage that we're stuck with for 100 years. So I would actually say I'm very appreciative of all of the broad recommendations that take into account how to continue to, as Mark said, build community consistent with our values. But many of the recommendations that focus on streamlining, taking some projects that don't need to go through this intensive process. don't need to go through this intensive process, out of the intensive process, and focusing on those projects that do need, therefore, taking what limited resources we have. And let's not forget, the people who do this are volunteers, for the most part. They have lives, too, and they have to pay their own rent. So I want to be mindful of that limited resource as well, and use that limited resource as effectively as possible. So I think in many regards, we're achieving simultaneous goals here, but I want to cop to what Commissioner Saltzman is saying. I definitely am most interested in how to speed it up, streamline it, and reduce the cost and get more supply online. Just for the record.
I would comment that I think I could tell you numerous occasions where more haste has been less speed, that if we don't give adequate notice, I mean, we've got the recommendation, thank you, by the way, again, for your report and all the details that you went into, it's very helpful. One of them is a bigger public notice. Well, if all the notice is to tell neighbors you can't really make a difference, then that's not actually going to help with our public process and public improvement in trust in our city. So we had lots of conversations during the comprehensive plan where neighbors somewhat gingerly accepted higher density with the promise that it would come with design guidelines, design overlays, and I think we need to stay true to that process. So this is a continuation of that, and involving all of the communities, which, not just the traditional ones, but those, I appreciate your comments about getting the notice to renters, for example. There's a number of ways that we can increase our outreach, but it has to matter that people participate if we invite them to do so.
Yeah, I love those recommendations as well. I agree with Commissioner Fritz. You know, before I got into the elective office thing, I was one of those people who'd walk by a site, and I'd always wonder, "What's going on here?" And sure, there was some process going on somewhere in some room, and it was probably even a very open, transparent public process, but I just wasn't into it at that level at that time of my life. And I always did appreciate, when I was in another city, and they'd have a great, and we're seeing more of that here, by the way, where you have a great big billboard, and often with a picture of what's being proposed there, and just simple stuff like that. I mean, you called it out, it's low-hanging fruit, it's sort of no-brainer stuff that we should be doing, and we do have to acknowledge that we've got a 50-50 split in the city between homeownership and renters, and all that, that is low-threshold stuff that we should be doing, just because it's common sense to do it, frankly. Commissioner Yu Daily, I hope we have not lost you. Are you still on the phone out there?
I am still here.
Fabulous. I wanted, I know it's sometimes awkward to do it by phone, so I wanted to give you free rein here if you had a couple of thoughts or questions.
It is a little awkward, but I'll do my best. Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone involved, their hard work on this report, and I appreciated comments from a whole range of folks, even when there was tension or disagreement. I think these are really fascinating and vital issues that are coming up, and of course, unsurprisingly, I'm also very concerned with how we are impacting development, specifically development of affordable housing. And it's certainly our intention to streamline and accelerate this process, because while I don't, there isn't a consensus among developers as to the utility of design review, there's certainly consensus that it's taking too long, and that's costing them a lot. And so we are, you know, seriously looking at ways that we can improve that situation. But I'm just looking forward to reading this entire report again and participating more in the conversation as we move forward. Thanks.
Very good. Unless there's, Commissioner Fritz?
I do, I just, I wanted to pick out a few of the themes that I heard to, I'm confident the staff have heard them, too. So certainly, the thresholds for the type of review is going to be a major issue that people will want to weigh in on. The entitlements issue is another. I appreciated Jeanne Galick's testimony about natural resources, and that hasn't typically been part of, except in the Greenway. And again, we need to look at the different plan districts to make sure that we don't say one size fits all, because the Greenways is a really good example of, it doesn't. I do think we should be adding, looking at adding standards and guidelines that relate to both natural resources and sustainability, and then therefore adding, potentially adding to the commission, which might help, if we do the same kind of thing that we did with the Citizens Review Committee, increase the membership, but keep the, what's, quorum, sorry, it's getting nice in the day. The, keep the quorum the same, but have more people there so that people have more ability to miss a few meetings. And so that, I'd like to add that to the report, is that element of, yes, design guidelines are more than what it should look like, it's how sustainable is it, and is it protecting the natural resources? I do believe there's going to be a good discussion on the respect for the different contexts in the different areas, especially with regard to the historic districts, but probably in regards to each of the mixed-use areas and the corridors have, some of them have a very different character than others, and that's going to be important to neighborhoods to make sure that that is maintained. And then finally, the collaboration between the commissions, design, historic, and planning and sustainability. I appreciated everybody who took the time to be here from those commissions, and I, since you are the citizen experts, if those commissions can come to a consensus, or at least to lay out to us what are the areas where there's a policy choice that you want us to weigh into, that would be very helpful to me. So thank you very much, this is an exciting project.
Very good. Could I get a motion?
I would move to adopt the report, accept the report.
Second.
So Commissioner Saltzman moves, Commissioner Fritz second. Is there any further council discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Saltzman?
Well, I appreciate the work being done here. As I stated, I just hope it doesn't take so long to get to a final product, and I just think that that's, we spend entirely too much time working on things, and I know we love the Portland process, and we love Portland, but we've got to be able to tackle some good ideas from time to time and make those good ideas work, and that means working for the people who love the built environment, care very much about what the built environment looks like, and the people who live in that built environment. And we need to make sure that all sides are being listened to. But I think we can do that in less than a year, in my opinion. And that is more consistent, I think, with the urgency here. And I meant no disrespect for any of the commissions that are present today. My example about concerns over design commission and affordable housing projects are as related to me as my term is housing commissioner. I'm not casting judgment one way or the other whether those concerns are legitimate or not, but nevertheless, those are concerns that I've heard and have talked with the design commission about, and numerous other people as well. I also wanted to echo, I do also appreciate Jeanne Galick's comments, and I think those something we need to look at, too, in terms of broadening the membership of the design commission and perhaps the Planning and Sustainability Commission as well. So thank you all for your work, and work to come. Aye.
Yu Daily?
Thank you, everyone, again, for your hard work on this. I do feel this is, these are vital conversations to be having right now. The, our built environment impacts our minds and our spirits, our health, our safety, our livability, and I think it would be, it would be a loss to give up this input. I really appreciated the comments about engaging tenants. Thank you for that. And also, the comment about, well, just kind of elaborating on that, I think more outreach is key, as we see time and time again, the kind of shocks that people are experiencing over this rapid pace of development. If they could have more of a sense of these decisions being something that they're participating in, rather than things that are just happening to them, we may have a happier community. So, aye.
Fritz? Well, thank you, everybody, for your report and for the conversation. As usual, land use discussions, I find them extremely valuable and important. In fact, after this, I'm going over to Metro to have some, another two hours of it, and I can't wait. The thing that I was perhaps most intrigued by was the graphs at the beginning that showed that 60% of developments who can choose the standards or the guidelines, they choose to go the guideline route. And I'm wondering, that needs evaluating, as far as why is that? Standards are too rigid, are they not the right standards? Or, in fact, is design review something that developers feel like is going to enhance their project, and that they could have some discussions with the experts from the commissions? And indeed, the way we grow does matter. I think that's one of the reasons that people come to Portland, is that we're not just saying, "Slap anything up wherever you want to because we need more housing," we're saying, "You can do both." And that's, as again, what I've said, last year, throughout the process, we were saying, "Yes, you may be taking more density, and we're going to make sure that it fits in the context of the neighborhood, and that it's got appropriate design, and affordable housing does not have to be ugly housing." And I know that Commissioner Fish would be saying that if he was here as well. So thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Yu Daily. I'm very happy to accept the report. Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I'd like to also thank Commissioner Yu Daily, and I'm sorry you weren't able to be here today, but I also appreciate the seriousness with which you take multitasking on important issues. It's been a pleasure to work with you on this, and I appreciate the partnership that you've forged between the bureaus to help make this happen, and I know we'll have to continue to collaborate going forward to make it happen. And I'll just add as a footnote, I appreciate the work that our bureaus are doing through the Gator session on another piece of this related, but not part of the DOZA, around the permitting process as well. So thanks to you, Commissioner Yu Daily. I obviously want to thank the bureau staffs. Mark, I want to thank you for your excellent consultancy. We heard a lot of great thoughts, ideas today, and they don't go onto the cutting-room floor with the adoption of this report. I think people raised issues, I took copious notes about some things that captured my imagination and could be ideas down the road. But today, I'm going to accept this report, because I think it's the right steps and the right direction. So I vote aye, the report is accepted, and we are adjourned. I have one bit of just clarification for tomorrow. Tomorrow, the City Council meets at 2:00 PM. There is one item on that I am pulling. So if you're coming tomorrow to hear item 428, which is the goals to transition to 100% renewable energy, we're going to pull that back to my office to better coordinate with Multnomah County, and we'll bring it in the very, very near future. But that item will be pulled tomorrow, just FYI. We're adjourned.